Could I have a roll call?
John Hutzco.
Russ Smith.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
Great, and Pam will do the pledge of allegiance and then we'll seat an alternate. So if everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we ready? Okay, I'm gonna go with, uh, yeah, I know, any me- uh, right. We're seating an alternate, we have a member.
The nominee for the best alternate is?
I can ask Bob to come on up and be seated with the board until we have a member who's out tonight. And when our board member returns to service, Bob will step down, but he's not, Jason's not coming tonight, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob.
If he shows up, I'll just.
Very good. We have two upcoming meeting dates, one on July 1 and one on July 15. And Pam, sorry, I still haven't had a chance to go through the minutes, I'll make sure we do that for the next meeting. The first item on our agenda is a decision for Sarlow Used Cars on Route 82.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I'm here for the revision of requests for used cars.
Okay.
Board had sent me to the ZVA to get a site plan variance for the display cars.
Okay.
And also regards to the apartment, being 50/50 of the usage.
Right.
Which it does come into that.
Okay.
Should walk over there.
Sure, that's fine.
This here shows the second floor.
Mm-hmm.
And part of the front downstairs of the front of the building.
Okay.
And the back part of the apartment, which is all 50/50.
Okay, just, I'm sorry, we're having a harder time hearing you than I thought, I thought that mic, is that mic on, or is that just?
Oh, sorry. I can answer that. Do you hear me?
Yes, that's.
Oh, that's just for, oh.
Okay. All right, then, I'm sorry, I am gonna ask you, we can't, we're having a really hard time hearing you.
You can move that, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
It's kind of boring.
So we had the front, the top of the building, the second floor of the building, the first floor of the building, I didn't catch what you were saying about the back half of the building.
Right, this is the first floor, this is the front.
Okay.
That I'm gonna use for office.
Sales office?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
And this is the apartment, the caretaker's apartment.
Okay.
And this is the complete upstairs.
Okay.
The whole upstairs and the front is the commercial.
Okay.
And this is the resident part of it.
Okay.
And it came out 50/50 on the square footage.
And the zoning board approved that?
Yeah, they didn't give me a variance on it because they didn't need to be, they said.
Okay.
And they gave me the variance over here, the seven foot, because of the pre-existing blacktop that's there.
Okay.
The display cars, so the line, I could put them at the end of the blacktop.
Okay.
See that coming in.
Okay.
And that's it, I mean, is there any other questions that I may be able to answer for you?
Okay, um, I don't have any questions, do members of the board have questions? Okay. Brendan, Michelle, or Joe, I'm paying or Scott?
Yeah, I just had a question, so you're saying that
Sure.
Second story is strictly to be associated with the commercial?
Correct.
And that commercial use will be associated with used car sales?
Correct.
Okay, I just think there should be a note on the plan stating that if there should be a use other than that, it either has to come back to the planning board, or it will violate the approval.
No problem.
And rescind the approval, so I think there should be a note stipulating that.
Okay, so we can, we can make that a condition of the change, we'll add that in. Use of the second floor remains solely for the commercial purpose.
Right.
Okay.
And any, any variation of that either has to come back to the planning board first, and if not, it becomes a violation and
Okay.
It comes in violation of the site plan.
Okay.
Okay, no problem.
I don't think we have to put that part into the resolution, though, right? Just the requirement that the second floor remain commercial use under the site plan.
But what happens if it doesn't? I think it should just be clear that he's in violation of a site plan if it's not. It can either be storage, it can be commercial, but outside of that, he'd be violating his approval.
You mean as for living space?
Exactly.
There could never be living space.
Okay.
So there shouldn't be a problem?
Not a problem, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay.
Just refresh my memory, this is directly across from where Wickby Inn used to be? On 52?
No.
On 82? I misread.
Okay. Any, any other questions or comments? Okay, we do have a resolution in front of us, Michael, do you want to offer it for us?
Resolution amending a resolution of final approval. Name of the subdivision is Sarlow amended site plan, name of the applicant, Richard G. Sarlow, location is Route 82, Hopla Junction, New York. Resolution offered by planning board member, Michael O'Brien. Whereas the applicant has applied to modify the previous site plan approval granted on December 7, 2004, and whereas the action is a type 2 action under SECA for which no further SECA review is required, and whereas the zoning board of appeals has adopted a decision in order addressing the non-conforming uses of the site, and whereas the site plan changes are minor, not requiring a public hearing, and, did I want to put "and" use of the second floor?
That'll be done and then now therefore be resolved.
Okay. Now therefore be it resolved. One?
So just that the map entitled amended site plan.
Okay, that the map entitled amended site plan, Sarlow, dated January 31, 2014, last revised on February 11, 2014 by M. Gillespie and Associates, PLLC, be and hereby is approved and?
Now we added an "and" be it further resolved, that use of the second floor is for permitted commercial purposes only, there will be no residential use, any change to this will require a site plan change, or a, it's not really a site plan change, it will require a change of use.
An amendment to the site plan.
Say it again?
Would be an amendment to the site plan.
Okay.
Or storage, correct? Commercial or storage?
Commercial or storage.
Permitted commercial purpose would include storage for the business.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Scott, I, should be a no residential use, any change to the use will require site plan amendment, require a site plan amendment.
Hmm.
It would mean you'd come back to us.
Right.
Okay. And Michael, did you catch this where, I just want to make sure, did we say is proposed primarily a change in use to use car sales?
Uh, ma'am, where's the proposal is primarily a change in the use to use cars, and whereas the zoning board of appeals has adopted a decision in order addressing the non-conforming uses of the site, and whereas the site plan changes are minor, not requiring a public hearing.
Okay, any other changes to the resolution?
One, I have one question, you mentioned is the caretaker's apartment.
Caretaker's apartment, yes.
I mean, the resolution doesn't say caretaker's apartment. It says apartment for general rental.
Okay, I was just sa- I was just saying caretaker, but it's just an apartment, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I say that because whoever's there will watch the place for me.
That's, that's all right.
That's why I say that.
All right. All right, um, be further resolved, oh, we don't have the, okay, did you read the 15 vehicles yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Be further resolved, no more than 15 used vehicles will be on the display at any point in time.
Okay, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by John Cutler, and votes as follows. John Hutzco?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
John Cutler?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And myself, aye, the votes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, okay, the next item on our agenda is an adjourned public hearing for Stone Ridge Commons Site Plan on Route 52 and Round Hill Road.
Good evening.
Um, yes, do I have a motion to open the adjourned public hearing?
So moved, seconded.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sorry.
Good evening, Richard O'Rourke from Keenan Bean, attorneys for the applicant. Here tonight, we have our professional engineers consulting, Richard Pearson from JMC, John Meyer Consulting, together with Dennis Lynch, who's right there. Who, of course, is with Mark Day. We were here on, on May 6, 2014, we went through a presentation of, of the application. You will recall that this is the result of a local law establishing the B1A zone that was adopted by the town board back in 2012, and in conformity with that zoning amendment, this site plan application was then filed. We have received the engineering comments from the town consultants, although I haven't seen anything from Michelle, but I think that we have essentially responded to all the comments that, that have been raised, so we're here this evening for continuation of the public hearing.
Has there been any changes to the plan since the last time we saw it?
Uh, yes, there have been some changes, and perhaps I should have Mr. Lynch go through it, that was in response to comments that have been received previously.
Okay.
Good evening, Dennis Lynch with Engineering. Since the previous meeting, we did add some changes to the plan, we did add a pass-through lane next to the drive-through alongside the bank to the west side, east side of the property, to improve circulation as per the fire department. Also, we did make some revisions to the roundabout, or the, the access road to the west side of the building. Other than that, there was no major changes, I know there were some, um, minor landscaping and lighting plans that were changed, but overall, the site plan had remained the same.
And I'm sorry, on this one, it's tough to tell, it is still a, you are dead-ending the driveway, it's no longer a throughway?
Correct, correct, there's the cul-de-sac on the existing road now that would no longer have access onto 52, but the site would have access through there.
Okay. Members of the board, Chair and G. will be right back. Members of the board?
Yes. What happens if, that was a non-disturbance area along Palan Road, and what happens if you agreed to trade the front piece for the back piece, and what if we decide we don't want the entrance from Palan Road, can you still make it work?
My understanding is no. And, and the issue we had, clearly, when we took a look back at the minutes back in 2004, the intention was, it's not a conservation easement, what it was, the intention was to, to prevent the clear-cutting and removal of all of the trees. And consequently, in order to have this site work, and in recognition of, of the importance of, of trying to maintain and the same amount of non-disturbance, we are adding additional area of non-disturbance, approximately 3,000 square feet, replacing the 2,800 square feet that's being removed. And because of traffic considerations, and I'm not a traffic engineer, Rich Pearson is here, the, the site does not work, essentially, from what I understand, so. The only other thing that I did want to mention, too, is that I note that last time, and I remember there was discussion in terms of required parking, and I know that when Dennis submitted the new plans, there were revisions made to provide for the additional parking that was required, and so that, that comment has been addressed, I think satisfactorily.
Can you just walk us through the parking for the west building, the one that has access from both the top floor and the, the lower floor? I want to make sure that we have sufficient parking for each of those floors, or that there's an internal elevator, something like that, so we can understand.
All right, I think Dennis would be best to address that issue.
Okay.
The building one here, to the west of the, the site, you'll have access to the, the first ground floor along here, as you go around back, this will be actually two-story, which you have, two-story floor, building, where you'll have access to the, the ground floor. There's parking along the front here, and along the front of the building here, and also along, in the rear of the building, along both sides. Right now, we don't have a proposed use for the buildings, we're showing the parking as it will fit into the site. Right now, we feel that we can meet all the needs that could possibly happen to the, the use of the building. There is access along the side of the building, a pedestrian walkway here, if anyone does have to park up here, but there is sufficient handicap parking on, on the upper and lower side of the building.
Okay, so is there an elevator in the building to get from the lower floor to the upper floor?
Um, right now, there's not, not proposed use, so there, I mean, if there would be a tenant that would require an elevator, but right now, there is no proposed elevator.
Okay, and what are you, I mean, you have to be basing a parking calculation on something, so what use are you using for your parking calculation?
Um, I believe it's the medical, which is the most stringent for.
It's not, it's not medical, because this, this, yeah, it's, it's office with suites, it's the typical one per 300 plus the number of suites that they're proposing. Okay, so do we feel that there are enough spaces available to the parking that's most accessible to the front of the building for that entire level of the building, and that there's parking sufficient for the lower level? Well, it depends on how the internal setup is, and I don't know how that's going to be, I mean, there's enough parking for that square footage for an office suite use between both things, but, but there's no understanding of what is going to be on which floor, and how many, because it all depends on how many suites there's going to be, and how much square footage is dedicated to, you know, office versus if there's any storage or anything else. But right now, it's based on the building's square footage, so they have X amount of building square footage, and they show the right, correct number of spaces for that square footage, but not, I mean, I can't tell you if there's, if they need two additional spaces up top or not, because I have no idea what's going to be inside the building. So currently, the way the plan reads, is that it's parked on that office space, so if there was any other proposed use other than office, we would have to look to make sure that they could actually be parked. Do we have anything that requires a minimum grade for pedestrian walkways?
I think it's a
Five percent? Do we have a minimum grade or maximum grade, I guess, for pedestrian, I don't mean minimum, maximum grade for pedestrian walkways?
Um, I think it's either a one-on-two or a five percent, between five and eight percent.
Are we exceeding that here with the walkway from the back to the front, or vice versa?
Well, a handicap would typically dictate, right?
Right, they are having handicap parking on both levels.
On both sides, right.
And they show, they call out some stairs on the left-hand side, but they're not really detailing the stair, you know, individual steps.
Oh, so the walkway on the outside is actually going to have stairs?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so it's, okay.
And railings.
And I'm sorry, I'm a little slow on the update tonight, is, are we precluding any uses based on parking distributions?
Absolutely, we've talked about that, they can't have medical in that building unless they can prove they can park it, so right now, it's, it's parked for office, professional office suites.
We, we meet the code, your code, for this office building for this square footage, we're not proposing, and Michelle is correct, and, we're not proposing medical office use for this building. Obviously, should we have a tenant that wants medical office space, we have one of two alternatives. One is to say no, or the other is to come back to the board and figure out a way in which we can accommodate the parking.
Okay.
Simple as that, yeah.
Just make sure you were on board with it.
So you looked at each building, well, the, the west building separate from the two on the east parcel? Correct. And we don't require any cross-parking easement or anything like that? Well, I, I think, I think that was all dependent on how the road was going to work, and, you know, if there's going to be the, the same owner, or if it's going to be two separate lots, and I, and my understanding, when Tom was looking at it, at the pre-meeting, was that now, it could potentially be sold off to two different owners, which means that that might be, you know, it could be a prudent move to make some sort of agreement between the two sides.
Right now, we're proposing two separate lots with an access across easement across the, two properties for access to each parcel.
Okay.
But you don't actually have a sub lot between the two, right?
No.
Okay.
I mean, you could look at it as either, if there's going to be any sort of, I mean, right now, it, it's pretty separate, and that, and they're parked for this building on this side, and they're parked for those two buildings on that side, and they have enough parking to meet the use that they're proposing on the plans. And the assumption would be somebody would get back in their car and drive over to the other building if they had business in both, um, each of the two lots? I, I guess that would be the assumption, whether or not that would happen is. Okay.
Would you be willing to, remember that, it was a non-disturbance easement that was given, would you be willing to convert that to a conservation easement along Palan Road, and also perhaps along the northern side of Building 2?
Um, that's something I would have to take up with the owner. Obviously, what we're proposing presently, as we understand what was the legislative intention back in 2004, complies with the spirit and the intention, no conservation easement was required back then, so.
None was asked for, I know that.
Right, so, but that's something I, I'd have to discuss with the owner.
Could you don't keep me proud?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm not going to say no. So.
With regard to the lot line, and the, the road, and the cross-access easement between the two lots, that, those are all things that we'll have to have legal agreements in place.
Absolutely, yeah.
There's more to be done with those, I mean, I'm comfortable with what you're proposing from a site plan perspective, but the actual legal mechanism to do that is, I guess, to be determined with the town attorney.
Yes, that's customarily something, yes, that is customarily something that's worked out with, with the town attorney, and this is not that unusual when you have a, a plan like this where there are two adjacent lots, so.
Okay. Hey, Joe, oh, okay, we were hearing the conversation. Let's move over, and Joe, I know you, you had mentioned something about this, I think, last time, there's still, there were still some stormwater calculations going on, do we have all the information we need for the stormwater, I know that these ponds are very, fairly large, I don't know if we're going to need maintenance agreements for them, or what the?
Yeah, there will be a need for maintenance agreements, we have a stormwater review memo back from March, when they were before the board. I re-included that memo with this letter, so that the, we haven't actually received a response on the stormwater commons directly, so there are a few things in there that should be looked at, you know, very closely, and, I mean, we've had discussion with Dennis and Mark's office about various points in, in the memo, but we haven't actually received a comment back, or a response back, and the plans really haven't been changed since, actually, probably since last fall, there hasn't been any really major change on the ponds themselves.
Okay.
So we'd be looking for that.
All right.
There's some issues in the ponds with the grading that we have comments on, and I'm thinking they can be addressed, it's just a matter of sitting down, going through it, and taking the time, modifying the plans, modifying the stormwater model, there's a hydraulic grade line analysis that showed some, certain points that had some issues with possibly water backing up in some of the pipes on-site.
On-site or also into the subdivision?
Only on the site itself.
Okay.
Is there any issue with capacity?
I, I don't believe so, but it's, it's the, the way the ponds are drawn, and how it ties in with the surrounding grade, we have comments related to that, so depending on how that gets resolved, might affect, you know, the, the final volume of the pond, but they're certainly, you know, large enough, from a gross, gross volume standpoint, they seem to be large enough, it's just a matter of making it look correctly on the plans.
Is there a way to make them smaller, or are they the size they need to be?
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't think we can really recommend that they go smaller, because this, this site's unique in that they, they were given the criteria of not having any off-site discharge, even up to the 100-year storm.
And now it's a condition of the rezone, so I think it's important that these things just get nailed down.
Right.
Because that was a condition, so.
Yes, and obviously, what's unusual about this is the fact that they're actually built, typically on a site plan application, all of this would be a plan, and not something that, where the construction would have already occurred. Construction has, has occurred, there's no problem with capacity, it's just a matter of, of, as I understand it, making sure that, that the final design is something that is, is acceptable to the town consulting engineer. Well, a portion of the pond is built.
You're not saying that there's no change to the pond, though?
I think one pond.
A portion of it is built, yeah, one pond is partially.
A portion of one pond, but the other one hasn't been constructed yet, so.
Right.
So it's not.
But I thought there was also change to the, to the pond that exists.
There's an existing pond that's here now.
Right.
There's going to be some modifications to this pond.
Okay.
And also, there's going to be this new, new pond that's created along here, which this will take a lot of the water that's coming down from the actual subdivision, and then this pond here will take the existing water that's going there now, and the additional runoff from, from the site. We have, we did receive the comments from, from Joe's office, we've gone through them, we're just waiting to finalize all the SWIP comments, until we have a layout and all the numbers of impervious and impervious ground cover are, are known, so that we're not, kind of changing all the numbers every time there's a change to the plan. So once, I think that the, the public hearing is closed and we're set on the plan, then we can finalize all the numbers with, with Joe's office.
Joe, are you comfortable that we would close the public hearing, and there wouldn't be any significant change to the site plan regarding the ponds, with what you're missing right now?
Yeah, I think we've looked at the overall volume and size of them enough that I wouldn't see them.
Because if you end up having to make a significant change, you're going to end up having to reopen them, I mean, the applicant is saying to close.
Yeah, there isn't much room to expand. His alternative's going to be to shrink his development, so, I think we can leave it at that, as long as they're comfortable with that. I don't think there's any room to expand the pond, so.
Right. Yeah, the ponds are fairly max, maxed out on the site, and, so.
I'm just hearing there's calculations that are missing, which, if they're going to change something about the ponds that's significant on the site plan, and we've already closed the public hearing, we just have to understand.
They can sure, certainly shrink the development, it may be, right?
Yeah, it would still have to come back in, though.
Take a thousand square feet and three parking spaces, if that's what it takes to balance out, right?
Just still have to come back in, right.
They would have to come back in to shrink it?
If they're changing the site plan, sure.
I think the, the comments that you're worried about, or more concerned about are more of stormwater quality and the actual overall size, and the generic shape of the ponds are going to remain the same.
We wouldn't have to reopen the public hearing for that, would we? To make, to shelter you?
Not, not knowing what the changes would be at the time, I don't know.
What I'm saying is that they have a little too much impervious, and they can't make the pond bigger, and they have to knock off a thousand square feet of retail or office space and three associated parking spaces, we wouldn't have to reopen.
Well, it would be, it would be an amendment to the site plan.
But we haven't, like a subdivision, you can shrink the number of lots, I thought this would be kind of safe.
I mean, as long as there was, as long as there was nothing that was already looked at, that it was exceeding, you wouldn't have any issue with SECA, but you would still be, you would still be amending the site plan, it would be changing what was actually built out there.
So you have to reopen the public hearing.
What's proposed, right? Okay. And the, and the only other issue that we had was that, that we did, you did provide a copy of the Indiana, the letter for the natural heritage program, which I've been requesting.
Right.
And they did identify that there was a maternity colony within 150 feet of the site, so you will likely, and I have not, D.C. has not gotten back to me about what the restrictions will be yet, I did speak with somebody, but they had to look at it. There will, I'm guessing, that at the very least, they'll restrict when you can take the trees down, and probably the Palan Road disturbance in that area, because that's closer to the wetland, so I don't know exactly where the maternity colony was spotted, but they may have some sort of restriction related to when you can construct the property, and they may even come and, and restrict trees that can be removed, hopefully, they wouldn't be any trees that would be in a location that you would need to remove trees.
Right.
So Michelle, how do we confirm that? They're, they're supposed to get back to me, but I have yet to have a final say on that. Okay.
I have run across the Indiana bats, not personally, but on other applications, and, and typically what it is, that there are certain conditions that are typically what it is that there are certain conditions that are attached to the type of trees and when they can be removed, and so we're, we're, we understand that. And that's a condition that could be attached.
Yeah, I mean, pretty much almost anything in East Fish Gill is required to
Right.
Remove trees between October and March, but because maternity colony is so close in this case, I mean, you don't typically see it at 150 feet from the site. I'm guessing it's back somewhere where the wetlands, in the wetland area. You know, hopefully, the tree that they spotted, the colony on, was not on the property, but we don't, we don't know that yet.
Okay. So, are there trees also being removed for the second pond, the northern pond?
Yes?
Yes? So, you're going to want to make sure we know what those restrictions are, because you aren't going to be able to put in necessarily drainage or the road, the roadway connection until you're able to remove trees. And if they're going to restrict specific trees from being removed, that may also impact the plan. Is there any way we can expedite getting a response or at least understanding?
Well, I mean, they received, they received the plans during circulation, and now they, they got their request for the National Heritage Program, and I believe the letter was dated from December 2013, was when you got the response back from them about the maternity colony, I think it was from 2013. So, I don't, I don't know why they haven't made any other comments on it, it's kind of unusual, other than our bidding.
We're prepared to accept that as a condition. We have to, so...
Prepared to accept what as a condition?
They won't, they won't even get their, D E C won't sign off, I mean, I think that they'll, will pick up during the stormwater review, if they're, if they haven't addressed the Indiana bat issue, that will be picked up during their stormwater review.
But, but let's say that we put some sort of construction restriction in here, if they say that you can't remove it.
Then that's something we, we have to address, if it's, it's clearly a condition.
Okay. So, Michelle, I'm sorry, Michelle, what's the likelihood they're going to say you can't remove certain trees?
I don't, I don't know, because, I mean, only, the reason I'm saying that is that there's so much up in the air with the bats right now, they've put in all these new stringent rules, so I have not yet seen them, I mean, we've seen this on so many projects, and typically the only requirement is that, that timing restriction.
Right.
But we're, we've all been told that there may be harsher restrictions coming down, and I just don't know what they're going to say.
That could significantly impact this plan.
It could significantly impact development in the state of New York.
All of it.
And the issue...
Well, agreed, but I mean...
So, that doesn't mean that you stop consideration of an application, because we've been told...
No one's suggesting that we're stopping anything.
Okay.
I'm suggesting that there's a risk to your plan
We understand that.
If you find out that you can't build the driveway where you're proposing it or put in the pond that you're proposing, that's all.
And that's, that's an issue throughout the state of New York?
No, no one was suggesting stopping anything.
Okay.
I'm trying to make sure we all understand what we're looking at in terms of things that are not yet answered, because we don't have an answer on this yet, we don't have the restrictions. Michelle, anything else from your perspective?
I think Brendan had...
Yeah, the, I think, on the plan you labeled proposed access easement from the entrance onto 52, but since the way you have the plan laid out and the turning restrictions, they're going to have, cars are going to have to exit onto Palin Road, so that proposed access easement is really going to have to run the full course of the driveway on the eastbound line.
We can revise the access easement.
Okay.
Brendan, could you go point number five?
Point number five, okay. Most of the comments, Dennis, I think so, the comments from my office.
Yes, sir.
I mean, most of them are, are, you know, just clarifications. I do actually have the correct turning template now from the fire truck.
Okay.
So, I'll, actually, I can leave that with you this evening. Mike, I think you're referring to, and this is a comment that we've spoken about at previous meetings, where, you know, the applicant's proposal is to restrict left turn movements onto 52. It's a left in, right in, and right out, and then the remaining movements are on Palin Road where there's no left in, but a left out, and a right in and a right out. What that, the modifications they made to the plan, where they put some internal signage within the site to direct, to direct vehicles to the appropriate access point, so they could get to where they were going. We, our office had contacted the D O T to find out whether there was any possibility of having a full access onto 52. They indicated to us that it was something that they would review, that it wasn't what was presented to them at the time. And, you know, we looked at it as just being, you know, that the plan, the way it's formulated, it functions, but there's a little bit of a trade-off in terms of, it's, the internal circulation isn't as intuitive as it would be if it was, you know, not restricted access at a couple of the entrances. And also, like, you couldn't argue that it's, you know, that it's, it's certainly safer to take a right turn out onto 52 than it would be to take a left turn, but you're, you're sort of trading that operational and safety issue to Palin Road where people that want to travel 52 eastbound are going to have to take a right turn onto Palin and cross over, cross over two lanes to get into the left turn lane and, and turn at the signal in a distance of, you know, of less than 250 feet, and that's all we want to understand. When I did speak with the D O T, they indicated that, you know, even, even in the highway work permit process, if the applicant wanted to propose to have full access on 52, that they could entertain it at that time. So, that's still, you know, that's still something that the applicant can consider. Any questions from that, Mike?
No, thank you.
Brendan, do you mean that in addition, I'm sorry, do you mean that in addition to the Palin access, or...
In addition to the Palin access, right.
And then would that then restrict the movement further on Palin, or would it just be, hopefully, cars would choose to go out directly onto 52 if they're going eastbound?
Right. It wouldn't change the access onto Palin Road. The restriction there, the county didn't want left turns in, just because of the close proximity to the intersection, so that restriction would stay.
Okay.
I think the only thing I'd like to clarify that might be so, two things from my comments. One is, I left a comment that, we talked about it at the last meeting, about being able to provide signage at the, at the, what will now be the, the access point from the subdivision on Palin Road. I don't know if the name of the road's alluding to, but...
Cooper's Lane.
Cooper's Lane, so, you know, that, that wasn't added to the plan yet, but that means something needs to get added.
That would be part of the highway work permit for the county, because it would be in there right away.
Yeah, okay. But I mean, it should be, you know...
I would go like a no-outlet plan.
No-outlet, right. Or whatever, whatever the appropriate signs are that the county's going to approve. Also, the vehicle turning plans, they're, they're actually not at the scale that's indicated, and they're, they're difficult to read, and I don't, you know, I don't think, and it's, you know, it's the case with a lot of the plans, so. A couple of comments with regard to that. The, those plans, that's where you're actually showing your sign, the site sign, the stop signs and the other signs. So, it might be worthwhile, since you could shrink the scale of that plan and put those, the signing tables right on those sheets, and then to make sure that all of the proposed features are turned on in that vehicle moving plan, because the fire truck especially, you know, the ladder and the boom, they have large overhangs, that if there's signs and stuff that are being proposed, we want to make sure that those are being cleared too, not just the curb lines. And then if there's any way to make the, those, those plans appear a little bit easier to understand, and either, maybe the line weights of, of just the proposed site could be lightened and the vehicle turning stuff darkened, or you could actually use color, it'd be up to you, it's just something that, because they, the lines overlap a lot, or separate the movements out. You know, have the entrance one and the exit one on a different one, you know, leave that up to you to how to display it. We did ask them to put a, I think at one point in time, we had comments regarding site distance at the, at the driveways. They do include a site distance plan, it's not all-inclusive, and it's, and I, actually, at this point in time, I don't think there's a real need for that. I think the site distance should be indicated on the plan, but my suggestion in my comments was to put it in a table on the site plan, and we don't actually need the layout of it, and then indicate the site distance for each of the driveways, for the critical movements and the criteria, and put it in a table.
It would only need to be on there when there's clearing required, right?
Yeah, well, the line indicates that they don't need to do any clearing. If they're, if that was the case, you're right, but since there's no clearing required, it's just a matter of indicating that adequate site distance exists at all the locations. All right, that's all I have.
Brendan, do you have any concern that anything you mentioned, and I'm thinking maybe specifically that the fire, and fire truck turning radii, is that, is that going to change the plan significantly? Is there any chance that that's going to have a significant impact? Or is there anything else that you think might change the plan significantly?
No, actually, the, the template that Dennis was using, it actually has a, the truck that the town is actually getting has a better turning radius and a little bit shorter of a wheelbase, so I think that when he lays the correct truck in there, it's actually, he's going to find that...
Other than possibly having to move a sign or something like that, or a curbing a little bit, it shouldn't significantly change.
I don't see anything significant pulling out of that.
Okay. And with the, with the west building, is it, does it need to get all the way around, or is it just trying to get it into the parking lot or close enough to the building?
Remember that we, they modified the plan to show fire access around the building.
Right, but, and, and we're confident that truck makes it around that access?
Yes, yes.
We lost the picture again, I'm sorry. See if we can find a way to extend, yeah, sleep on that. Okay. Scott, anything from you?
No.
Any other comments before we open for public comment?
Laurie, we had a few subdivision comments, nothing too major, but just clarifying, you know, the amount of property from the right-of-way, or the proposed right-of-way going to the lots, just having a summary table for the exchange of property. And there was, you know, we asked at the last meeting, they show snow storage for the cul-de-sac area in an easement. We also wanted some information on the as-built of the utilities that go through the proposed cul-de-sac, so we know if they would have to be relocated before the town takes that as a cul-de-sac.
Okay.
The existing utilities are actually outside the cul-de-sac on the existing plan, I can make them darker, but they are actually located outside of that, we had it staked out by the surveyor, and everything is outside that cul-de-sac.
Is it, is it on one of, one of the two lots you're creating here, or is it actually in the subdivision or the right-of-way of the road?
It would be in the right-of-way, the, the right-of-way for that.
Right-of-way of the road, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Joe?
We had some grading comments, like, because of the upper and lower levels on the one building, the, we saw that the contours leading along that drive are a little bit, there's quite a bit of a cross slope as you pull in, so we were asking to show that as like a grading profile through there, just so we could see if it's going to cause any problem for like an emergency vehicle or something, that it's not too extreme.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
Good, okay. If there's anyone here from the public who'd like to speak for or against the Stone Ridge Common Site Plan on Route 52 and Round Hill Road, I'd ask you to come on up, we have a sign-in sheet up here on the table, we just need to capture your name for our minutes. Come on up, Neil. And then if you don't mind, once you sign, you can come right to the podium.
I just have two questions. The first is, have you considered the amount of people that you're going to get taking a shortcut off of Palin Road to go around that stoplight? We live on Cooper's Lane at the, what would be at the top of the picture here, and we get tons of people who come down the street quickly trying to avoid that stoplight.
So, this plan actually proposes to put a cul-de-sac at the end of that road?
I understand that, I'm worried about the road that you have right here, if there's speed bumps or anything that you're putting in, because people will go through that new development to avoid the stoplight. Through the commercial area.
Just within the driveway of the building itself?
Absolutely, yep.
And try to make the left onto Palin, you mean?
No, they'll come through down here and make a right onto 52.
That's a good point.
Because they do it now, going through that whole neighborhood, let alone just having a quick shortcut around the corner.
Yeah, yeah.
And I know there's an agreement with the high school that they have asked the kids not to do that, they'll take away their, I don't know what they'll take away.
And I'm sure that all of the kids care about that agreement.
They don't listen very well, but I know there's a lot of traffic that comes through already, so I would think about that here, because it's going to make it even more tempting, especially before the business is open in the morning, and there's nobody in the way.
Laurie, just to make the point, and maybe Rich can even clarify this a little bit better, but, you know, the right turn, the right turn at Palin onto, onto 52 is a pretty efficient movement, and there's not a lot of backup or delay associated with that movement. Usually, when you see someone taking a diversion, it's usually because they can get there quicker. It also, there's also an exclusive right turn lane, so it's not, you know, it's not a matter that they get caught in the queue and they can't get up there, there's a pretty decently sized right turn lane. So, I'm not sure there'd be much of a delay or much of an incentive for someone to want to cut through the commercial site. In reality, it would probably take them down.
I'm telling you, there's an incentive right now for them to cut through the neighborhood when they got to go three-quarter mile to do it.
Right, but I, you know, I would, you know, I don't know the specifics of that, but I would tend to think there might be some other reasons for that too, and not just necessarily to save time, you know, if they're, if they're actually heading, heading westbound on, on the 52.
But if I'm coming up on Palin and I see a red light and I see traffic moving and I can make a quick right-hand turn and cut through the, that's, I think that's what you're saying.
Correct.
Yeah, I've got it, I understand what you're saying.
I would do it.
Yeah.
Just be honest.
Right, they could, they could do something, right?
But it cannot be put on Cooper Lane.
Right. There could be some disconsent, you know, within the site to make it even less, to make it less attractive.
And there is a stop sign, right, at that connection to the common right-of-way? Wouldn't there be a stop sign?
Actually, I don't think they're currently proposing one.
And I mean, you're not going to want to put like a no-through-traffic sign on a commercial site, so that's not really a, not that that's going to deter some folks, but...
We're showing the longer delays for the right turns out of, out of our site onto 52 west than the delays under signal control for coming down Taylor Road and getting right turns.
At, at all times?
During the, during the peak hours.
And the peak hour was the morning hour?
Right.
When school's about to start?
And the right turn movement at Palin Road is operating at approximately 50% of capacity, and the level serves it. So, you'll have a surge when, when school is coming, understandably, but other than that, I don't see this as a...
With the cul-de-sac, at least they won't cut through it to the neighborhood.
Yeah, no sweat off my back, I'm just pointing it out as something you might want to consider, keep some from racing in front of my house, so that's great, but I know that they'll do the same thing here when it's even more tempting. And my second question, is there a sidewalk or an exit from the cul-de-sac out to Main Road? There's a lot, I'm a runner, I go through there every morning, and I know a lot of the high school kids walk over as well, so I'm just wondering if there's a public access sidewalk that we can take out of the cul-de-sac?
That is a good question, I don't think we have one right now, but we can certainly look at that for pedestrian access.
Look at it or make it a condition? I was looking for a more affirmative answer than look at it.
We just need to talk with Brendan about it and see where, where it would go and try to keep pedestrians away from where there's going to be traffic coming into the commercial site. I have no objection to it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I'm sorry, did we catch, we didn't catch your name for that?
Kelly Lindgaard.
Thank you, Kelly, okay.
We have no objection to that.
Yeah, I was going to say, Brendan, I'm assuming we would want to put a sidewalk on the west side? Because somebody coming down Palin Road is probably going to come all the way down Palin Road and then turn onto 52, so I'm assuming if you're coming through the cul-de-sac, you're probably on the west side, heading towards the high school?
Right, I would believe that.
Does that sound right?
And it'd be less conflicting traffic, you know, crossing the one driveway.
Okay. So, pulling a sidewalk from the, from the emergency access of the cul-de-sac down to the, down to 52? Okay. Yep. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to, to speak for the Stone Ridge application? Going once? Going twice? Okay. Let's just do a quick recap, so, Joe, you were comfortable that stormwater can be completed after the public hearing, you don't feel there's going to be any significant change to the plan based on the calculations?
All right.
Michelle, I'm going to skip over the heritage letter for a second. I think the easements that we talked about, even the revised easement for Palin Road, Brendan, I, I think the easements can all be worked out after, after the public hearing closes, I mean, it's, I don't envision the easement's causing any major change to the plan, unless anyone disagrees? Okay. Brendan, what about the traffic items? Any, you're saying the turning radii is okay, is there anything with the traffic that you would envision as a...
Nothing that would cause a substantial change to that.
Okay. What do we want to do with regard to the, I, I tend to agree that Palin Road will become a very attractive shortcut if I'm, or not, the entrance off of Palin Road will become an attractive shortcut if I'm coming up on a red light?
I don't know.
Speed bumps?
That's, that's your only option.
I don't know if there's anything else that would be effective.
I mean, it might be the possibility, I mean, it could be the possibility of maybe more than one stop sign. It could be a stop sign at the intersecting driveway and a stop sign at the, at the, you know, where the parking lot discharges between the two buildings. Yeah, it'd be two stop signs and then another stop sign to get out of the site. I mean, that's...
And I was thinking, wasn't there some discussion of limitation of, of hours of operation, or at least that these buildings would not see their peak use at that seven o'clock when that hoard is back up?
Right, absolutely, you're not, you're not...
So the cars going through there would be pretty obvious. It's not like they're going to blend in. It's a good point, they're going to cut through, but, you know, there's not going to be a lot of other traffic going through there, right? So they would stand out. Of course, then again, they're doing it through storm drains today, and they pretty much stand out soon, but...
And I, I don't disagree that the, the wait times may be different, but I think the person in the car that makes the decision, do I want to have to stop at a red light or do I want to just keep moving and turn right here? I can just see that right-hand turn happening, right?
I don't see that as a major safety concern. If they do choose to make that movement, we would put the stop sign in to slow them down, but I don't think that they would have a significant impact on our site operations and it would be good site distance either way, but I think either maneuver would be safe.
Scott, from a, from a site plan perspective, let's, let's say we tried stop signs and not speed bumps, if the applicant realized that this is a bigger impact than they are thinking it might be, would they really have to come back here for, for speed bumps or would we allow them to install other traffic control devices?
Well, I think if you just put a note in there saying that, give that their discretion, they could have speed bumps.
I just, yeah, I mean, I just...
I mean, they actually sell, you know...
I hope that I'm wrong, but I, I hadn't thought about what you mentioned, so I'm just thinking...
They do have what they have, like, you know, they're basically, what I would call, almost like portable speed bumps, you know, I mean, they're modular, they don't have to be paved into the road. They can be pinned down to the road, you know, after the...
But how do they hold up the snow pile?
Yeah, not very good. They would, they would come in and out, but...
Well, but I wouldn't, I mean, I guess I wouldn't care how they were installed.
We'd be fine with having that at our discretion, depending on that, mention it recommendations of that we wouldn't have to come back.
Just, because there's a lot of, I, I drive through there and there are people that will take shortcuts, that they think that they're hitting a red light or something like that. That won't surprise me. Michelle, let's come back to, let's come back to the heritage letter and the possible issue here. The applicant is saying they're willing to roll the dice on that, but I...
I mean, what would happen is if they came back and said that there was some sort of restriction, that they weren't allowed to take down trees, for instance, in a certain location, and they would have, and they could potentially have to modify their site plan, then they would have to go through this process again. That's, that's the...
So as the applicant, I'm asking that we understand that very clearly, because it could, a, a limit to the, to the timing of construction is fine, you know, that we can add at any point prior to resolution, obviously, and you'll have to get that.
And frankly, other than the one time when we had the taking, and that was actually for Turtle, that's the only time they've had an incidental take permit here. We've had to have one for the Indiana bat, it's typically, it is typically the, the timing restriction. However, you know, we're all waiting bated breath for what's happening, because they're adding the long ear bat there, and we don't know, I, I will say that I got a call on another project today from DEC, very concerned about Indiana bat on a project where it, it was written off by the, the applicant's professional, where they said there won't be any issues with the Indiana bat, and I got a call on it saying, we are writing comments and we will be submitting comments on it. So I think it's, it's, the, the level is raised here.
So I just want to make sure that as an applicant, you understand that if they have a restriction, other than the construction timing restriction, which is something very simple to add to the plan post-public hearing and doesn't affect the site plan itself, if they're actually restricting the way you can remove trees or which trees you can remove, if that's, if those trees are in places where you're proposing development right now, you're going to be stuck without coming back.
That's, that's, we, we understand that we need approvals of all these regulatory agencies, and I'm well aware of this. I guess the issue I have, and, and the reason why I got a little excited, was that all too frequently what happens is we hear about impending regulations, and I've done a fair amount of work. We waited, we waited for about six years for the watershed regulations by the New York City DEP, and it was not until May 1, 1997 that those were adopted. So in the pipeline, there's always regulatory changes, and we know certain things are going to happen. Oftentimes, we don't know when they're going to happen, and quite frankly, respectfully, from a property owner's perspective, it's really unfair, because the whole reason you have property rights restrictions is so that you know exactly what the restrictions are. So we don't know what they are, we don't know when they're coming down, we recognize that, that they may in fact come down, and that there may be an impact that occurs with respect to our site plan, and we're...
So, so all we're saying is you have a choice at this point to leave the public hearing open until you have a response, or close the public hearing tonight. There's still some work to be done, obviously, we've talked about easements, we've talked about the stormwater calculations, we've talked about clearing up some of the traffic drawings and things like that. Nothing that we think is going to significantly impact the site plan itself, although you would add the sidewalk, obviously, coming from the cul-de-sac down on the west side of the drive to 52, but beyond that, I don't see anything that's going to significantly change the site plan going forward, unless you have an issue with that letter.
Well, I think, at this point, I think we, we would respectfully request the public hearing to be closed, and come what may.
Okay.
Hopefully not Indiana bats, you know.
Well, I just want, I mean, it's worth it to have the conversation, so...
I appreciate that, it's just, it's very, it's what we have to do.
So just one last, Brendan, Michelle, Joe, Scott, anything that prevent us from closing the public hearing tonight? Okay. And do I have a motion to close the Stone Ridge Commons adjourned public hearing?
So...
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you still have a little bit of work to do and some stuff to clean up with the, with the calculations.
And thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We would, we would schedule you for decision once we have all of that information and our professionals have been able to review it. So normally, I would schedule decision right away, but I'm not going to do that until we have some of these other calculations done.
Well, I think we're going to be as quickly as we, we're going to respond as quickly as possible.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we just kind of nail that down now? Can Dennis, can you tell us, because we're going to need time to review in case we got to go back, because it could hold up the final decision, so, 10 days, two weeks, how much time do you need?
I'm going to get it done as quickly as possible, probably within two weeks.
Scott, I think the, my assumption would be that just at the point where we receive everything, we just need to make sure you guys have enough time to review it, and we would put you, put the decision on the very next available agenda, as long as you, as our professionals, have had time to look at it.
I know the...
And the things that we can condition for, like easements, don't need to be finished, but the calculations, I want to make sure those...
So two weeks?
And Scott, it's going to, I mean, the letter from Heritage, we need to know that, because we don't know what conditions to put in a resolution until we know whether or not it's just construction or there's something else, so... Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for the Hopewell Square Proposed Daycare on Route 376. Pam, do we have everything we need to be able to open the public hearing? We do? Okay, so do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So...
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Bear with us just a moment while we get pictures up on the screen. That's good.
Good evening, Paul Colliata, PRG Engineering. As last comments on our discussion for the proposed daycare in the lower level of the Hopewell Square site, you can see we added on the top here those two extra parking spots, so we have the ample amount of parking spots for the upper-level offices, and we have ample parking down here for the lower level, for the daycare. We also widened out the south access road coming around to about 21 feet, which gives us a 16-foot roadway with a five-foot hatched pedestrian movement area, just in case someone did have to go from the lower level to the upper, they do have a safe area to, to walk. About two weeks ago, me and Michelle went out to do a light, we took the light meter, we went around, we did find that the, the lowest levels of lighting was in this back corner here.
Okay.
So we did add a proposed light that will match all the existing lights on the site, and I think Michelle will agree with that. Light being installed, we have ample lighting throughout the site. Brendan did, two days ago, gave me that turning radius for the new fire apparatus. It wasn't shown on this plan set, but I did review it a little bit two days ago, and based on what we used last time and what we have now, it should be fine making it into the site and around the site with no problem at all.
Okay. Okay. Any other changes since the last time we saw it?
No, that, that's it.
How much, how much leeway does a bus have, like a school bus, when it comes in? I mean, my, my big concern is, every day there's going to be a bus coming in there and attempting to make that turn, where you've got the, is it 26 or 20 feet, right?
That's a 26.6 feet between those two parking spots.
So if there are cars in both those spots?
Correct.
Where the tips of the thing is, I mean, you have to admit, that's going to be a pretty tricky maneuver for a bus.
No, not, I mean, your, your normal travel roadway is a 12-foot lane, so you have over, you know, if you had two lanes going each direction, it's usually a 24-foot, so you actually have more than that. Also, if, in a parking area, your middle aisle for double parking is only 24 feet, we actually have two and a half feet more than that. And I have seen firsthand, since this is existing, cars being parked here, and actually with the guys doing some of the work here, they have come in with trucks and trailers and machines, the two cars parked here, and make this turn with, with room to spare. So we have plenty of room there.
Okay. Brendan, you...
Mike, just, just to add to, he did, he did provide a turning template for, for the, for the 36-foot bus, so the large bus.
Okay.
And they showed that it adequately made it through the site.
Every day I go by, I look at it, I go, wow, it's going to be tight.
Okay.
I've been wrong before?
Any other questions or comments from board members? Brendan?
Uh, I'll just...
Oh, I'm sorry, I wanted to, go ahead, Russ.
The entrance in the backside, is that at ground level into the building?
Yes, yes, ground level. You can walk right in.
And drainage and everything?
Sorry, say that again.
And you got drainage to keep any...
This is all existing, this is all existing here. You know, the only thing we're doing here is just restriping this area, adding this little piece of proposed parking area, and you just have, you know, your new sidewalks, any additional doors that were added, you know, to go into the...
What I'm thinking of is water runoff, runoff coming down there, if that's at ground level in the back.
No, well, this, this, if you look at the grading plan, you don't see the grade, well, you can see some of the grades on here, but no, if this parking lot comes, it comes down, and it naturally, the lay of the land naturally flows this way, so no water can get into that building, the way it naturally flows, yeah.
All right.
Brendan, anything from a traffic perspective before we open for public comment?
I was just going to confirm what Paul had said, we did get him the correct turning template, but even our preliminary look at it, we believe it's going to fit through his site without, without an issue. The only comment that I had that I'm not sure was addressed was that center, center parking aisle in the rear.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to talk to you about, yeah, moving the center aisle down.
Yeah, we talked about shifting that to the...
I did look at it, and we moved it down a little bit, but I kind of put it back, so I wanted to ask you if I could leave it like that, because if I move it down here, you know, to center, it's going to be down in here almost someplace to center it, and then it kind of be, just like where the 21-foot is, I tried to bring the 21-foot out, so I just think maybe it might hamper the turning radius coming in here, or would you rather try moving it not centering it?
Well, I just think that the way it is now, it kind of hampers the turning movement into that rear back aisle, and you also are going to have, that's where the refuge collection is going to be, so trucks are going to have to pull into there also.
So you want me to completely center it, or just move it down a few feet, over, down a little bit?
I mean, you're, you're actually, I think you have like two extra spaces, you might even be able to get, if it's easier, you could even get rid of one of the spaces along that.
No, I'd rather keep the space up. I mean, if I can move the parking spots down, not center it, but move it down, you know, a few feet, I'll see how it looks when I bring it down. I'd rather keep the parking spots if I can fit them.
So if you think, like, you know, centering doesn't do perfectly, you know, restrict some of the other access, maybe you'll bring it to the center, but maybe, you know, at least another parking spot, I think.
Yeah, I can look at that, yeah.
Laurie? Scott and I were just talking, the, now that that pavement has shifted a little more this way, that's kind of getting close to the area where the new pump station and some of the other septic components are going, and Paul's plans have reference to the other plans that were sent to the health department.
Are they going to be on this property?
Yeah, they're on this property.
Okay.
But now that he's moving his work closer, well, we think regardless it's on the property, he probably should show the locations of the pump station and the septic tank and anything else.
Maybe we should incorporate those detailed notes from the pump station you got previously approved into this plan set, just so we have...
I would just include that sheet into it?
Yeah, so we have one complete package.
All right, do I even include the, the water one that you want?
Even though it's previously approved, I like to have it included.
Okay, just put them in, is there one sheet, put them in there?
Yeah.
Okay, we could do that at the final plan set, yeah.
And then just locate it on, on this one.
Oh, then locate on this one, okay.
Yeah.
How close is it?
I'm sorry.
How close is it? Are you concerned, or is it just a matter of...
No, just so we have a complete picture of everything that's on the site, that's all.
Okay. Any other comments, please? Michelle?
I was happy with the lighting, there is a little bit of a dark spot in that corner, but the rest of the, the site is pretty uniform.
But there's going to be new light there, so it's...
There's going to be a new light there, and he, and they're going to put it on a timer. The rest of the lights are not on timer, but they'll put that one on a timer, so it'll go off when the site is not occupied, and there is sufficient light on the rest of the site, and it's actually very uniform, so...
Okay, great. Brendan, anything before we open for public comment?
No comments.
Okay. All right, is there anyone here who would like to speak for or against the Hopewell Square Proposed Daycare on Route 376? If you just, if you want to come on up, you can sign in on our clipboard. Go in once? Twice? Okay, come on back up. It doesn't sound like there's anything that we, I mean, including that extra detail, It doesn't sound like there's anything that we, I mean, including that extra detail, it sounds like, Scott, you've already seen the plan, it just has to be added, so...
Yeah, just sort of...
And Brendan, I think moving the striping of the parking spots is fairly minor, so is there anything that stops us from closing the public hearing? Okay. Any other questions from board members before we close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you, do I have a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We'll put you on for a decision on our next meeting, which is July 1st.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Muse at Hopeful, 68-unit workforce housing on Route 82 and Palin Road. And Joe is recused from this one.
Good evening, Chairwoman J, members of the board. My name is Ken Carney, I'm here tonight with my partner and son Sean Carney and Jeff Cantamo and Eric Schwabom from Insight Engineering. Since our last appearance, Insight has taken some of the recommendations of the board, looked at the entrance again on Route 82, and a couple other changes to the design. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Cantamo, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. At the recommendation of board and their consultants, we went back out into the field and did some additional work in order to assess our driveway location with respect to Route 82 in an attempt to move it further to the west and get it closer to the commercial driveways. As we recall, we looked at two separate entrances out of the western end of the site that would line up with the commercial driveways across the street from us, and came to the conclusion that the site distance would be inhibited by improvements on our neighbor's property, thereby requiring some cooperation or some easement. We did not have details of that specifically located, so what we did is we went out and did some additional surveying, we tied into that property line in order to get a good level of comfort as to where the private property extended to, and then we located the actual obstructions, which were some trees along the area where Eric's moving the arrow.
Were the trees within the right of way, or were they on the private property?
They were both. There were about five trees, I think, that interfered with us, and I think two or three were on the property and the remainder not. There's also a grade issue where the grade rises up slightly, so there would have to be some regrading and contouring, again, extending onto the private property in our opinion. And there's also a small sign there, some kind of identification sign, which isn't in use right now, but that would also have to be relocated. But what this figure does show is the fact that the first two entrance locations that we did look at do in fact have problems with the site line, such that work on private property would be necessary. After talking with Ken, who tried to reach out to those people without avail, apparently one of the phones is even disconnected, we don't really believe it's feasible to pursue cooperation with our neighbor. I mean, I'm going to say, having done this for a long time, and this type of project is not the one that's going to garner support and get us the type of agreements that we would need to execute that. So what we did is we moved to the next best thing, and that was to move the driveway from the position we originally had it, which was where Joe's mother's road now intersects Route 82, and start to move it to the west and attempt to get it as far west as we could and still control our own destiny in terms of what we would have to do in the state right away to achieve the site distance. And that's what's shown on this plan that you see now. The new driveway location that we're proposing does have the ability to achieve required site distance, it will require some work on our own property in terms of clearing, looking to the east, but it does work. What that allowed us also to do is rearrange the buildings internally to get to something that we thought would be beneficial. There was the group of townhomes perpendicular to Route 82 that would seem to be a slight concern of the board, that we were able to reorient. So with that, I want to show you the new site plan. The new site plan has the same number of units in terms of townhomes and flats as we had before, same bedroom counts. So as far as what you're looking at in building mass, bedroom unit counts, all that is the same. The only thing we did do, and we did mention we were going to do, is at the back of the southwest building, we added a small addition, which was going to be the office for the abilities first people. So that's been added on to the footprint, we had the architect look at that.
Was there also some extended outdoor space as well, or patio or something?
Yes, there is a small patio outside that addition, right down in the, will be southeast corner there where Eric's pointing.
Okay.
What we also did was we added an emergency access drive on the east end. One of the fire advisory board comments was to get two entrances into the site. We felt that that would give good through circulation for emergency vehicles or emergency access, that would be gated off, it would be maintained, and we think that will solve that issue. The other thing we did was, we talked about the orientation of the one-story townhomes with respect to the groupings. The groupings actually got a little smaller, I think originally we had a 10, a 10, and a 6. I believe now we have a 9, a 9, and an 8. I think my math's right on that, yeah, 9, 9, and 8. And what we did is we put the lower accessible units, which are one-story, on each side of the driveway, in an effort, you know, to keep the tunnel effect down relative to the entrance. And then on the far end, we, again, put it off on the east end. So we actually are very happy with how this laid out. Again, the entrance is in that far, as far west as we could get it to work. And we continue to request some land banking, which we've shown as before, I believe we showed 96 or 98 spaces, and our land banking, approximately 40 spaces, I believe it is. So that's the latest layout. What we're really looking for this evening is some sort of acceptance on behalf of the board with this layout to allow us to then take our drawings, which we had started with a fairly complete packet of engineered drawings, and advance them with this layout. But we wanted to be, before we did that, we wanted to be sure we've attended to the concerns and that this did make sense to the board.
Okay.
Oh, one last thing, the architecture. We talked about the architecture last time, you asked us to do one other elevation, we did that, we have not colored them yet.
Okay. You asked for an elevation of the...
I think that's because we thought it would be facing the road, but it looks like you've reoriented the building now, but I appreciate it.
Right, but we did it to complete the set in any event, so...
Yeah, that's fine, thank you. A couple of questions. So we don't have the traffic circle, I'm fine with that, I don't miss it, but I want to make sure that where you've oriented the driveway, I think there's a residence across the street.
Correct.
So I saw that you had some screening proposed, and I want to say that, I can't remember whether I, whether we looked at it, or whether we had a topo map, and it looked like that lawn may drop off slightly, so we just want to make sure that the way you're doing the screening, that we can see where the house is, and right now the residences aren't actually shown on your map, so that we could just get a sense of where are they and what the topo is, so we know where headlights are going to be hitting a second floor window or a first floor window or not.
Yeah, I forgot to point out that we lost a little traffic circle, and that, as you know, that was a comment from the county and the fire board, I think, both had that, so yes. And what we did is we took a look at the alignment of our driveway, which is not lined up directly with one of the neighbors, but does split the last residential driveway and the first commercial driveway. That particular homeowner does have like a landscape berm on the west side of his driveway, and our proposal would be to extend that berm and plant it with some evergreens, and of course, we would need that homeowner to agree to that, and we would write a check so that that improvement could be made, and we'll commit to that, but of course, we can't make them do that.
Okay, and normally we would ask that you would oversee the installation too, if that was what the homeowner requested.
Yeah, whatever their preference is...
If we're not putting them out with something like that.
Right.
Okay. All right, so you mentioned again about parking and land banking, and I want to say, and I'm, forgive me, I want to say it's on the west side, you have land-banked parking back at the second building, the building behind the Route 82. And I think you also had snow removal shown where the land bank parking is. And I was trying to understand where the abilities first and the seniors would be versus where we have handicap parking versus where we have land bank parking. I just want to make sure we have enough parking in the right places where we're actually going to have potentially two-bedroom units and active drivers, not that there won't be people at abilities first and with the senior housing that are active drivers, but I just want to make sure we're not land banking next to buildings where we think we'll need that parking.
We can get into that a little more as we go forward, but what we have, just so you know, is we have 98 spaces of actual full conforming parking and 40 land bank. Off on that west end, we only have four spaces, the majority of the land bank spaces are actually off the east end, around the area of the caretaker. Ken's operated a bunch of these types of developments and feels that we have ample parking. We can do an assessment by looking at front doors in radii and make sure we have the proper balance, but we'll certainly take a look at that.
And I, you know, again, if it's appropriate to have more parking around certain buildings or less parking, I mean, I'm fine with that, I think, but we just want to make sure we have a good feel that where the land bank parking is would still be accessible and readily available to the units and not, you know, somebody at the set is parking all the way down the other side of the development, sort of thing. So we want to make sure there's enough parking close to each building to satisfy that building the way they're set up. In general, how does the board feel about the proposed boulevard entrance as opposed to the traffic circle? Like it?
Much better.
Much better, okay. And then it looks like it's a, that's an emergency access to the east side, so...
Do you have land banking on that?
Actually, the land banking would come up, that would be the future aisle of the land bank, so it would tie, we planned it into what would be the future aisle.
It would be a double bank parking through there, and that would be the center aisle for that parking, so even if that parking were to be built, then you would have a short...
Still have an emergency access that you would, are you saying you'd still have an emergency access, or at that time you would want to make that a full access because that's where you're putting it?
No, it would be emergency access, but shortened because the parking would make up half of that.
Okay. Okay, so the only thing I would, I guess, maybe say at that point is that you probably, maybe there isn't vegetation, is that part of the field now? There isn't vegetation there now?
Yes.
Okay.
The, right now, it's pretty open from here, because...
Okay.
We're pretty much developing in the field area, there's a little bit of grading we're doing here to fill a small ravine, and then this is the stand of trees which exists now that we're going to have to take some out of for site distance coming back from these.
Okay.
Jeff, the designs still show at the very western end, a small turnoff that ends, what is that?
We put that there really for truck turnaround, what we wanted to provide was if a moving truck came in, the garbage truck comes in, the fire truck comes in, there's a way for them to actually turn around. There's a provision, actually, in the fire code, the state building code, that has a bunch of different arrangements you can provide for fire turnaround, and that conforms to it, and we thought it was the appropriate thing to do.
I'm sorry, I think we're confusing you. The last design that was up, can we go back to that one? Yeah, I'm really talking right off of 82, on the most western tip of the property. There's still, some of the drawings show it, some don't. If you look right next to the property line, there's still a small turnoff?
No, that was, what we were intending to do with this figure was show our site and show the location.
Yeah, the one all the way up the corner was option one, and I think there was one even between where you are now and there's option two, and then there's where it's currently located.
And this figure was just to show the different options, if it was confusing, I apologize. But yes, that's not there. And I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about this turnaround here.
No, no, sorry, that was my confusion.
Okay.
So, can I ask, what is the process for this now? I mean, is still...
Well, if this layout looks like the layout to move forward with, then the applicant would be able to go and finish all the drawings and the rest of the things that would come along with site plan.
But it's in terms of what is the timing relative to, I assume it still has to go back to the town board for some...
Yeah, there's actually, there's actually a specific procedure in your code that applies to the application of this overlay zone. And what your code says generally is, there's some very basic submittal requirements and the catch-all, whatever else the planning board deems necessary, to be submitted to the planning board, so that the planning board can get to a point that they're comfortable with the site plan as it's proposed. Seeker gets slipped in there, but at some point, the board preliminarily, I'll say, accepts our site plan, and then there's a joint meeting scheduled with the planning board and the town board.
Okay, and I guess where I was going, there's a couple of things. One, is how far do we travel before that happens? And then two, you know, obviously having read the records, I mean, I look at this, and this makes progress in almost all areas, right? That it's, while it's the same number of bedrooms, it's a different demographic makeup in terms of...
I think it's the same number of units and slightly less bedrooms. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
From what I understand, previous application was almost 50% of the units were three-bedrooms.
Okay.
Now, where here, we have 12, three-bedrooms.
Okay, so it's, it makes progress on traffic, it also has, you know, addresses some of the issues of the ingress and egress issues that came up the last time, it also has a different demographic in terms of the people who will be in there, that were certainly an issue before. So I mean, I think it makes progress, I mean, what do you, all right, I guess I'm asking point blank, I mean, how do you think this is going to play relative to the public hearings that you saw the last time?
Yeah, we read the record to try to understand the issues, and there's certain things physically, you know, that we control with the site, which are the things you were pointing out, and then there's certain other things which I think are more, certainly less more tangible from a site planning perspective that we don't control. But in terms of the site planning issues, we tried to take serious what we heard and try to incorporate something to make this more palatable. Will we garner the support of all people? Probably not, but what we've attempted to do is put together a plan that would conform to your code, also put together a plan that's sensitive to the seeker findings you made in the past with a negative declaration on the previous project, and also taking into consideration some of the good work that was done before and discussed with the previous applicant. So we're confident that we have a very strong application and one that'll fit into the Carneys mold in terms of having a quality workforce housing project that they can manage in their hands-on fashion, and, you know, we're ready to go. I mean, we're looking for, again, as I said, some indication that the layout makes sense, and then we want to update our full package, get back to you, reaffirm our seeker position, and then move to the town board. That's really our goal, the joint meeting with the town board, I should say.
Right, and I agree with you, it makes progress in every single one of those plans.
Okay, let's just run through, Brendan, anything else from a traffic perspective?
I think Jeff pretty much covered it from the site's perspective. I think actually sliding the driveway to the west probably optimizes that, you know, even the amount of grading clearing they have to do on their own site, but positioning it on that curve, you know, in its most feasible location, I do think it has, this layout has somewhat of a reduced impact on the residents across the street, is definitely affecting less housing, and I think the grading is a little bit different when you get to that area. The, you know, Jeff did indicate that there's some turnaround areas, and I think the only thing that would, you know, we would like to see to make sure that this plan works in reality is to see some of the, you know, the truck movements laid out to make sure that the site is going to function as they intend. that the site is going to function as they intend.
Anything we need to update from a traffic study perspective? Are we comfortable with the fewer bedrooms and same number of units that we've covered?
I think, actually, commenting on Mike's comment, it actually doesn't really change the traffic. The traffic was based on the number of units, so in theory, it doesn't really change the traffic. In reality, there probably is some change. I mean, less bedrooms, you might anticipate less available drivers, but from an analysis standpoint, it was based on the number of units, which I think is held constant, I think-
But from the perspective of when we did the traffic, so there's no need to update it at this point, it's still current enough that we're-
Yeah, I think, and, you know, we've done some recent counts out there, and I don't think anything has changed-
Okay.
-significantly. I think the only thing that, I know Jeff mentioned, the previous meetings didn't mention this one, they did split that boulevard entrance to add a left turn and a right turn to make it operation a little bit better.
We did also reach out to Mazur, who's on our team, and asked them to update the traffic report by taking a look at the latest numbers, and we'll be submitting that to you.
Okay. And still, you have the sidewalk down to a bus-
Correct. Shelter.
Shelter, thank you. Brendan, anything else?
That's all.
Okay. Michelle, anything from your perspective?
The only, only thing from my perspective is if, are we extending any of the limits of disturbance at all? Because we made, in the seeker record, a certain amount of disturbance, so we would just have to address, they would just have to say, someone would have to say that this would not create any additional significant adverse impacts, and the only thing I can think of that you could run into again is the Indiana bat if there's any more trees coming down.
Right, and I do believe that our disturbance, the limit of disturbance is very similar, but we'll take a closer look, and we've asked Mike Nowicki, again, to update his report relative to Florifon and Wetlands, and we'll be submitting that update as well.
Okay. Anything else, Michelle? Larry, engineering, anything else?
There's nothing at this time. I mean, there's no water or sewer or stormwater or grading or anything on these plans yet, so-
Okay.
We're kind of waiting with bated breath.
Okay. And your plan with water and sewer hasn't changed from the last time we talked about it, we just don't have any information formally yet, is that correct?
The three, the three things that Larry are looking for, stormwater, water and sewer, what I can tell you is we'll be looking at stormwater, kind of with a fresh look. The previous applicant had all subsurface stormwater. We're going to try to maybe take advantage of some surface opportunities with that. We've already started to look at that. Relative to sewer, we are going to be proposing a very similar set of infrastructure, which will be a pump station and a forced main to Trinkel Lane. And then water's a little more tricky. We have a couple options with the county line and the towns' plans with water, and we've been in conversation with Scott on that, and as that develops, we'll incorporate them into the plans.
Okay. The only other, the only other comment I had was just making sure, again, looking at each building from a parking perspective, and Michelle, maybe we can do that, and just making sure we're comfortable that there's enough spots accessible to each building that we're not going to have cross, you know, cross issues.
Yeah.
The one that I really thought might be tight was the, I don't know how to label it, the back, second, first back building on the left. Looked like it had fewer spots than some of the others.
What we'll do is we'll-
There might be more units in it, so-
We'll have Ken and Sean give us maybe a little better data on the type of demand from each of the different types of units, and we'll draw like little radii off them and see if it's balanced, and we'll show that to you.
I mean, you've got the four land bank that you could put in and maybe land bank some, just, just making sure that it's balanced with the building.
Yeah, it's a good point, we'll take a look at it.
Okay. Sounds like Brendan's comfortable with the location of the drive, or any questions from the board, any other comments? Are we comfortable?
I want to make, and I forgot, apologize for asking this, is, again, one of the things in terms of defining this was tying it to the village. What is the pedestrian plan relative to the village at this point?
Yeah, we don't have a plan. That's a little bigger than us, I would say. The pedestrian connection to the village, I think, is certainly a really great improvement overall for the whole, this whole area. But really, the town and the DOT, I'm assuming, are going to drive that. We're a small player, we'd love to have, we'd love to have that discussion brought forward, we'd love to participate in it, but we have not advanced a plan for that.
Okay.
If the board would like us to do a little research on it and talk to DOT or others, we could do that and-
Yeah, Scott, I remember with the last applicant, we had talked about possibly having the sidewalk run along towards the village, but we pulled back from that, something to do with the water line, and I can't remember exactly.
I think it was maintenance of the sidewalk.
I think it's the winter maintenance becomes an issue as well.
Okay.
And who is responsible for that.
Okay. And from a planning perspective, sidewalk-
So would it be an easement to allow a sidewalk in the future?
Good thing.
Sidewalks are always-
Always a very good thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think it-
Especially with what's happening. But we don't want sidewalks to know her, but, so even if it was just an easement on the plan to allow us to build it in the future or something like that.
For a future connection because you don't know what's going to happen in the future.
The key buzzword there is palatability of-
Yeah, we can start some discussions, we can give some more thought to that. Honestly, we haven't, so it's a good question.
And Scott, I mean, with the, with the emergency drive, I'm not sure that you'd need sidewalk necessarily along the entire frontage. I'm thinking more from the, maybe down the emergency access and then out to the corner or something like that as an easement, not, again, not necessarily installing it if maintenance is an issue.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That was reasonable.
Okay. Is that what you're thinking, or?
Yeah, I mean, I'm struck by like, for example, Hopewell Lane, how many people are actually cutting across that undeveloped strip in the back and just, you know?
I mean, if it got that far, we'd have to evaluate, do you put the sidewalk down Fishkill Road perhaps? But now you've got to still cross 82 to get to the other side, but at least you'd be on a town road and then tie Nobo Lane, which is going to have a sidewalk tied into Unity ultimately.
Yeah, I was going to say, you could actually go back and come into Unity from the other side.
And then you can also access the rail trail also.
Okay. All right. So let's keep that on the radar.
Okay. Yeah, we'll start thinking about it and talking also to DOT, maybe for advanced plans that they may have.
Okay.
So, yeah, our next, our next play would be to submit, and-
Okay.
We'd like to submit in the next several weeks. I don't know what your planning board agendas look like coming up, but-
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
But let me just, I'm sorry, for members of the board, we've said we're okay with the driveway location with the emergency access layout of the buildings. It's changed, one of them, they're now parallel to the road.
Much better.
Questions? I like it better without having the perpendicular building, but-
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Okay. I can't give you a specific meeting until we know when you actually bring it to the next submittal, but we would put you on our next available agenda when-
Okay, great.
We need to have time for our professionals to be able to review and make their comments and things like that, so it won't be, if you submit it the day before a meeting, it's not going to be that next meeting, so understand that.
That's more than fair. Thank you very much.
Okay. Did you hear what Pam said?
You said last working day of the month.
You have to submit by the last working day of the month.
By noon.
Okay, and that puts us on an agenda-
The second meeting of the fall.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so if we submit the last day of June, we would be on July 15th, is that correct?
The second.
Uh, July 15th, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what we'll shoot for. Okay, thank you very much.
You're looking at me funny, but it's on my agenda that July 15th is the thing.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
We need time for the professionals to be able to take the plans and review them, so, okay. Any other questions for us, or, I'm sorry, Bob?
Yes, I have a question and a comment. The first is a question. How are you going to distribute the visitor parking and how much will there be internal to the site?
Okay.
Because I know visitor parking, lots of times people, I assume, are assigned one car per apartment or whatever you want to call it, and quite often they have two, so they take a visitor parking. So I know I go into Fishkill, and I go to visit a friend, and all the visitor parking is full. So you want a parking on the street around the corner?
It's a good question. What I have shied away from, assigning parking spots. We don't have assigned spots. In most of our places, we don't even have spots that differentiated for guests or tenants. It's been suggested, but I just, it just hasn't been an issue. I find that with assigned parking, one of the first places I did years ago, 14, 15 years ago, I assigned parking spots and it turned into the Hatfields and the McCoys, and I just decided not to do it anymore. And there's plenty of parking. What happens, what happens in a good community, and we expect this to evolve into that, is there's a respect, and people try to take a certain spot within one or, one or two, either to the left or the right, one or three spots that they always go for. And you'd be surprised in how, how that can work, that people will actually yield to other people. If the board would like, I can, we can set up tenant parking and then have, you know, the furthest spots away for, for guest parking.
I didn't know how to address it, I just know-
No, I understand.
I go visit my friend with visitor parking, it's almost always full.
Yeah, we, visitors are something that we really watch very carefully, and the tenants know that. We, we have, we have very candid conversations with our tenants at our interviews, and so our onsite property manager watches very carefully any visitors, because we have, you know, every tenant has a right to have a visitor, of course, but we just want to ensure that everybody is doing what they're supposed to be doing.
The situation evolved in my case, just, I assume it'll evolve in yours too, since you have senior and handicapped units, is there was a friend, he was in a wheelchair, and he was a good buddy of a bunch of us. So about once a week, we'd go over, we'd take him dinner, four or five of us would go over there, we'd spend a couple of hours cheering him up, and then we'd leave and we'd occupy five, six parking, parking places.
Okay.
That's why I brought it up.
I understand. I think-
One of the things that we'll do in relation to looking at the positioning of the parking spaces is also give you better statistics in terms of Ken and Sean's experience with the different unit types. For instance, the one-bedroom units, I think Ken will tell you, demand less than one real parking space per unit. You know, so when you start to look at the numbers and where they are located, I think you'll see that we've got quite a bit of visitor parking, and we just have to make sure we have it spread out right, which is, I think, the nature of the question, yeah. We'll look at that.
I just thought I brought it up.
Thank you.
Okay.
The other one is a comment, and I can comment on the last application, and the question came up of essentially security within the complex. And I believe the difference between your application and their application is they were going to hire someone to maintain the complex and make sure things were all right. In your case, it's an employee, I believe. Now, the public, I think, said yay, they didn't care why it was turned down. You're going to face not in my back neighborhood, not my backyard, and I think that's going to be the main problem with the public. I just thought I'd state that if you can.
Thank you. You're correct. The person who will be there, the onsite manager, is an employee, but it will not be turned over to that onsite employee until Sean and I and our regional manager install our system, which includes us doing the personal interviews of all the tenants and so forth. Once that's done, and once the people move in, the property is, is, is doing fine, then our onsite manager works in conjunction with the onsite superintendent. The onsite superintendent is also our eyes and ears, who is going to be living onsite 24/7. The property manager is there during the day. We feel that this model, it's worked for us, we think it kind of sets us apart, and if there is an issue, we hear about it and we, we deal with it right away. The public hearings, I agree with you. Tomorrow night, we will be somewhere in Westchester dealing with the same issues. I went through very heated public hearings in other towns in Westchester. Very, very heated, heated public hearings. In one case, I'll tell you two stories. One story, when we cut the ribbon for the first phase, everybody turned to us and said, boy, this is, we didn't expect it to be like this, can you do another one? And we're under construction right now. The other place was, some people have certain perceptions, and you can tell them what you're going to do, but sometimes you cannot manage their expectations. The only way to manage their expectations is to produce your product and do what we can control. It's not something that's foreign to us, it's not something that I look forward to, it's not comfortable, but we've been doing this, you know, for a while, and I understand the concerns, I understand, you know, the questions that will be asked, and we will answer the questions truthfully. All right?
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, and we will make that July agenda, I promise. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. The next item on our agenda is the Orthopedic Associates Site Plan Discussion on Route 52.
Good evening, I'm George Kronk with Chase &amp; Company. Chris Lepine could not make it this evening, I know he's been presenting this project to you in the past. I have Jennifer White here, the CEO of Orthopedic Associates, and Dr. Coleman, one of the doctors at the facility, or their various facilities. I already have a problem. The last planning board meeting we were at, the board asked us to look at a third alternative or a second alternative from the primary plan. What I'm going to do is walk you through that plan, and what I've done is, on the top screen, I have the current application plan, and then down here, I have the alternative plan for you guys to see the differences, but I'll walk through the changes that were done on the plan so you can see that. What we've done is, in the alternative, is we've put the building in the back area like you guys asked us to take a look at for this layout here. All the parking now sits up in the front, up against Route 52, and the building sits closer to the back to where the septic system will remain. One of the main differences that's occurred on this site is, of course, you don't have that access through to the bank site over here, you would have to have your access up here, which is, which is closer to the Route 52 interchange. The second thing that you have is the dumpster is behind the building, so it's basically completely out of view, whereas in this plan here, it actually is being placed in the edge of the wetlands. So it's not a preferred location, but certainly not the end of the world. There is a slight increase in the impervious with the alternative plan as compared to the original application. Probably the biggest change that's occurred is, is I think really from a landscape architectural point of view, and that is, is that with the building pushed in the back, what ends up actually happening is you're losing all or most of the landscaping that was up in the front that surrounded the building. And what's important about that is, is when you're driving down Route 52, you've got the soccer complex, you've got the real estate office, you've got the bank, you've got this facility which is vacant right now, you've got the, the spot, the little restaurant, you've got the gravel and peystone and supplies, and then you've got a little strip mall and then the gas station, and finally the Dunkin' Donuts and the Button Deli area right there. And what happens is, is several of those facilities, specifically, say, the pellet place, is very close to the road, and when you go by the soccer complex, it's very close to the road, so there's no, there's no natural buffer that's occurring along there because basically the parking has been pushed all the way up. So what this plan is doing, the original plan is doing, is it's providing- So what this plan is doing, the original plan is doing, is it's providing a step back from that, so you're getting a little bit more of a buffer. You still have some parking along there, but it's all actually moved back a little further than it currently is if you went to the site today with the old restaurant. But we took a look at both plans, and we actually sent the alternative back to Orthopedic Associates. They looked at the plan, and they discussed it entirely with their own staff. And really, one of the biggest things that came out of it had nothing to do with the site layout, it had to do with the program and the function of the building. And what I'm talking about is, is one of the facilities right now that they're housed in, it's over in Fishkill, it's in the West Degeria, and they share a parking lot with many users, and their doctors share that parking lot with many users. So what ends up happening is, everybody is walking between the parking lot into the facility together. And certainly Dr. Coleman or Mrs. White could talk more about that if it's needed, but the point is, is as they walk in, you know, it's just like, as if you went to a social event and you know someone who's a lawyer or a doctor, they're always being asked these questions. And what happens is, is Orthopedic Associates wants to, you know, provide the best service to their clients that they have, but they want a proper makeup and determination before they're giving any form of advice to their patients. So what the plan originally proposes, that the new plan isn't really providing for them, is that separation, so the doctor can actually get into the office, provide proper service, and not be stopped in the parking lot to ask about prescriptions or some other needs that may come up. So, you know, that was really the biggest feedback we got from the applicant when we did this change, and, you know, certainly it was a surprise to us as well. So we've provided both applications, or both designs for you at this point. And to further add to that, Mr. Lepine went to the zoning board to discuss the variance, because certainly with the original application, the building is a little bit closer than the current building, and talked about the variance for doing that, because it's within the 100-foot buffer. And they talked about the landscaping, they talked about the configuration. And the outcome of that discussion, at this point it's only a discussion, was that the zoning board would certainly support either application, and they certainly liked the landscaping in the front, so. We're here before you, we'd like to request that we could get on for, well, obviously we wanna hear your input first, but we'd like to request to get on for a July public hearing, so we can get construction underway before the fall comes, or before the winter comes at this point, so we're certainly open to any questions.
Okay, so a couple of questions. I'm not understanding the comment that doctors wouldn't have their own entrance. Why wouldn't they have their own entrance in the alternative plan?
So in the alternative plan, this would be probably the primary doctor parking, or maybe along here. And what happens is, is as they're coming in, this is the same entrance for the patients.
Why wouldn't there be an entrance?
Well, this would be the doctor's entrance. So they would be walking by the patient's entrance in this scenario here, because they're either coming around the building.
Let me ask it a different way. That entrance that's there on the back, why wouldn't you move it to the front and just make it look like a front door?
Actually, I asked that same question. And the reason is, is that inside the building, they have a certain program that they have to follow, they have to locate certain pieces of equipment in certain areas, and there's ideal locations for placing certain types of equipment that they have in there. And they specifically need to place one of their MRI devices along the back, it needs to be far away from the, or further away from the traffic as possible, whether it's parking or Route 52 itself. So the ideal situation would be to have that equipment along the backside, which is not where you're parking your cars.
Is it sensitivity to traffic?
That's what I'm being told.
There's already been a traffic study, and then actually a cell phone camera analysis on the property, and the only place where we can actually put the MRI machine is in the back left corner of the building, so that it's further away from those situations that may have an impact on the MRI.
So the back left corner of the building in the preferred plan would be a comparable location to the front right corner in the proposed, in the alternate layout? Is that correct?
The idea is, is they wanna get the MRI away from 52 and the cell tower.
Right, so having the building further away from 52 would help achieve that, I believe. I think that's what you're saying.
If someone puts up a...
They can't flip-flop it, is my understanding.
I guess I'm just, I'm still not understanding why an MRI machine is affecting a door, but I, let's look that.
If they move the cell tower, that spot could go to hell too. Wouldn't you be better off just caging it? Take care of the problem.
I'm hoping they don't move cell towers. I live near here, and I'm glad we have service.
So, aside from the MRI, it looks like, and I just can't see from here, there's, is that landscaping between the parking lot and the building, or is that?
This right here?
Yeah, what is that?
So this is the stormwater treatment. You can see up in the, in the original plan, there's kind of an oblong oval shape, that's some of the stormwater treatments up in the upper left-hand corner, closest to 52.
Okay.
That same treatment is here. But what happens is, is that treatment becomes very linear now, so you're gonna have tree, bush, tree, bush, down the line, whereas actually up there, from a landscaping perspective, you can provide some depth on that.
So I'm not clear why you wouldn't hold the parking lot back a little bit and swap the drainage to put it closer to 52 like it is in the plan up above. I'm not clear why it needs to be next to the building.
Because we wanna treat the runoff from the building. We want the roof leaders to come in. You could, but then you'd, your pipe is gonna be approximately two feet down, by the time it gets over to here, it might be two and a half feet. You're gonna run it through a biofilter, which is 30 inches, plus some ponding on top. And the problem is, you would have to raise all this to then pipe that out over down to here. And the entire site would have to add probably a couple feet worth of fill, or at least on this side.
How far away does something like that have to be from the septic?
I think it's a 50-foot offset for a stormwater, and anything that maybe has an infiltration component to it.
Can they get close to it?
Yeah, they can build near it. But I think there's even a requirement to be offset a certain distance from a foundation, depending on if it's a deep foundation or a flat slab.
There is. If you have a basement, you're supposed to be 25 feet minimum, and if you have a flat slab, they recommend 10 or so. So we're basically providing that in both scenarios, at least that 10-foot, we're not looking for a basement in this location.
Now, scenario two, the doctor entrance is the same as the patient entrance. Yeah?
In the second scenario...
Yes, that scenario.
The doctor entrance is here, the patient entrance is at the drop-off.
Okay, but they would still see the doctors walking in from the parking lot from the waiting area.
Correct. That's why Orthopedic Associates would like to stay with that scenario and not this one.
That's just not a good idea with patients and doctors, because people get really ticked off, the guy's late. He may have had an emergency, but all they say is, he's coming in late enough, sitting here waiting for a break.
Great, I mean, that's...
There's other considerations too. You know, you prescribe a lot of narcotics, people looking for narcotics, you get a constant... Parking lot is just not a comfortable situation for physicians. The segregation, it exists at all locations, we have six locations, the segregation works. At the whole wall opposite, it doesn't work, it's a lot of times you're kinda sneaking in the back door in urgency, you're...
You don't wanna do that.
This is not a desirable scenario.
No, you don't wanna do that.
George, we're slowly on a layer in this thing, that there seems to be other requirements that you're working with. Do you wanna share some of those too? I mean, it's, of why this layout is, I mean, the point of the placement of the MRI machine is certainly a very good point. Are there more of those?
That's the one I'm currently aware of, I mean, there's, you know...
If you overlay that plan over this plan, the MRI machine could be in the exact same place if you flipped the building. That's why I'm not understanding why...
The exact same physical location.
Right.
But then it's in a different part of the building.
I don't know the internal workings of the building. I mean, I've been to some of the facilities, but, you know, there's certainly inefficiency in configuration. I've worked on many projects where we've done operating rooms and stuff, and you have, you know, a lot of makeup that goes along with that, it's not just, you can't just necessarily stick a building or a conference room here and an office there, there's a certain precedence when you're laying out the internal workings of the building. You know, I have to go with what's being told to me, separation from various towers and locations on the site, you know, to get their equipment to work the best as it can work.
And also, just on the inside of the building, it's a two-story building. The MRI machine, where it is on the first floor of the building, we then have to have the x-ray machine further away on the second floor of the building, so that they don't interfere with each other. So the internal workings of the building are such that there's really no way that we can really move things around on each floor because of where we're required to have that MRI machine. So it really plays a strong role.
Even if you made the building a mirror image of itself?
Right.
I'd like to point out too, that the current building, the old restaurant, is partially sitting on the footprint of the building in the upper plan. Whereas in the back building, or in the alternative here, where you have the building in the back, it's actually gonna be sitting on the back edge of the existing building out there.
That building's also a one, well, one and a half story building.
It's a one-story, I agree. But down where the real estate office is, that's a two-story. If you look at the mall across the street from the soccer complex, they have an architectural facade to make it appear like it's two stories. Certainly all the IBM stuff is many stories, obviously set back. So I don't think it's completely unreasonable to expect a two-story building in that location. You know, even the building that's there now is almost two stories from the roof.
Oh, I don't think it's unreasonable to expect a two-story building, you're just putting a two-story building very close to the road, when you have the ability to put it further away, which some of the other buildings you're describing are actually located further off 52. The bank right next door is, well, it's further off, further behind. I don't think, one of your drawings, I think, located the bank building, but I'll see it on this one.
Right here, you can see the drive-around for the bank. So this is the drive-through, here's the outer edge, so the drive-through is gonna be roughly here to come around behind the building. Well, the teller is on the other side, but to get to it, you go around behind the building. You know.
Okay. I think the applicant is fairly firm in their preference for their original layout. What's the pleasure of the board?
The original layout.
Okay.
Original.
Right?
Yeah, I'm fine with the original.
I'm fine with it now, knowing that there's more reasons why they chose that. We probably wouldn't have made them go to a third iteration if we knew those were the things that were holding us back.
Okay. John?
I agree.
Russ?
Okay, so we certainly would like to request to get on a July meeting, and thank you.
Okay, well, we would just need to make sure we have everything in the office.
There's one other, I was talking to one of your neighbors, brothels drive. They were saying, in the spring, they have to delay their laundry regularly because of the water table is so high. Are you guys, have you, how high is the water table right there?
So, I know we've done a bunch of testing out there at this point, because we need to understand the feasibility of the septic. It's a mound system on this, so we're actually gonna be up higher than the ground level. It's already built, it's already there. So any elevation we put the building at, unless we raise it about five, six feet, we will be pumping into that system. We've done ground testing out there, we've had the health department acknowledge what we're doing, this is, you know, it's no secret what we're trying to do here. We're actually less flow than when the restaurant was there, so...
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's actually a smaller use.
Okay, but, so the bottom line is, the water table is extremely high too, and it is, that is the reason for the mound.
Yes, and I know the further, I guess, northerly you go, the more difficulty cuts, is a nice way to put it.
Do we, I'm sorry, I'm not remembering right now. Do we have what we would need? You're asking to be on for a public hearing, or present the full application?
A full, I believe we'd like to go to a public hearing in July.
Yeah, so we... For a public hearing on the 15th?
15th.
Okay. And circulation is 25 days ahead? I was thinking of notification of the neighbors.
Public hearing.
25 days prior, right?
So you need that by...
I'm trying to think what day today is in county.
17th.
It's not even that late yet, I'm already having trouble adding, that's not good. You don't have a lot of days between now and when you'd have to actually circulate to the neighboring neighbors.
How many days do you want on the...
Notify the neighbors, I should say, I don't mean circulate, notify the neighbors.
25 days?
And place the sign out, right. Correct. We scheduled that depending on tonight's outcome.
That's fine, yep, that's fine.
I think you could do it, it just takes muscle.
You got a tight, yeah, it's a tight window. You can work with, certainly Pam and the planning office to make sure that you get everything out. And are we circulated for lead agency, or we need to circulate? Okay. With both plans, or with the original?
Both.
Okay.
Does that point...
That's fine.
...the last meeting?
Yeah. I just didn't know whether we actually circulated or not, that's fine. When's the 30 days?
They just said yesterday or today, right? When it went out? Yesterday.
Okay. Went out yesterday, or?
Pam mailed it yesterday.
Okay. That's still 30 days, if it's the 15th. Okay. Can you make the deadline to, for the submission?
We will do so.
So you're packaging by the 30th, but you have to circulate, you have to notify the neighbors 25 days prior, so you have probably less than a week to get that out. Advertising, you have to get your sign. What do we do when there's both, one year before both boards? Do we have to have two signs out? Both, okay, so you're gonna have to put the other sign out. Okay, do I have a motion to schedule the Orthopedic Associates for a public hearing on July 15th?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for Mam Realty amended site plan.
I think that's the CC top...
I saw, he was in here a minute ago.
Somebody...
If you would, that would be great, thank you Keith.
Good evening again. Keith Stoudt of HarvKronen Engineering, representing the applicant Mam Realty Corp. We were here last month, we engaged in some discussion with this site, mostly centered around the potentiality of the flea market. So we revised the plans in accordance with our conversation last month, and we submitted with what we believe is what was asked for at the last meeting, so I don't know where you wanna take the conversation, but...
Okay, let's, let's start with... Okay, let's, um, let's start with, Michelle, I know we've spent a little bit of time looking at the code and, and trying to identify exactly which part of the code would, would permit this use. And based on permitted use, tell us what steps and requirements there are.
So I believe that they would require a special permit from 19466, which is stationary solicitors, peddlers, and vendors. And once they receive that special permit, it's my understanding from reading of the code, that they would also then have to comply with Section 140, which is a permit requirement for, for a vendor. Now, the question becomes whether or not the, each individual vendor that was out there would have to meet that, or if it could be done via an umbrella for, for this particular owner who would then be covered by that permit.
That seems to make the most sense to have the applicant slash owner be the vendor.
So we've, we've looked at, and I think is this a section that makes an assumption of five consecutive, at least five consecutive days?
Right.
The way your, your plan currently reads and the way the proposal currently reads, Keith, is you have, you specify a period of time of the year where this would occur. And then you're saying, with the exception of about three or four weekdays, it would primarily be Saturdays and Sundays through the summer months.
Correct.
So we're, we're trying to, we're trying to figure out whether this section is the right section. There isn't really another section of the code that would cover that.
No. So, so the way, I, I think it's a matter of how you interpret it and that, the way I was looking at it was that we were granting the special permit for the site to, so that the site would have an allowance of a seasonal flea market, which could happen anytime during that period of time that they received the permit for, which is, you know, theoretically the summer or the, into the fall. And that any, any, that wouldn't necessarily have to be five consecutive days right in a row, literally, but it would be, because they could schedule the, the flea market any, any day of that period. So that's how I interpreted it. And it could be interpreted differently, probably, because it's not very clear in the language.
So the thought would be the special permit is issued for the season as opposed to for each weekend event?
Correct.
And because it's issued for the season, that is more than five consecutive days?
Correct.
Even if it's not operating seven days a week? I just want to, because we've gone back and forth with different sections of the code and what.
So that's how, that was my interpretation of it. And I didn't even think, think of the way that you were interpreting it myself. So, I mean, that's probably up for discussion.
Okay. So assume we proceed with a single special permit for the season. The code doesn't allow it to go for more than a season without coming back to the board and getting a renewal.
Correct.
And a review. There are still other things we need to talk about underneath that permit. So, Michelle, you want to just walk us through the requirements and then let's see whether this applicant and the current plan match it?
The standards are that you'd have permission of the property owner. Assumably we have that because the property owner is the one applying in this location for a vendor who would be using the site. That, in the location, that there would be no vehicle or stamp from which goods or food are sold located so as to impede the free and safe flow of traffic or obstruct any use of the driveway or roadway. It's saying the planning board shall review the proposed parking and shall require adequate parking to ensure that parked cars do not obstruct the road and present a safety hazard. So basically, they're saying the planning board is at their discretion how they want to deal with parking. A vendor must comply with all the conditions of Chapter 140, which is peddling and soliciting regulations and licensing of vendors. That permit is issued via the town clerk. And there's requirements related to that typically. And then renewal, the holder of a temporary special permit, use permit shall apply for one renewal for a one-year period by application to the planning board. So this is saying that they can apply for one renewal for a one-year period after this, after they receive this. So a total of two years.
Now, is that an application or is that just a, we submit a letter once a year saying we're requesting a renewal of this?
The, the way it currently reads is it's specific, and Michelle, you can read the exact language. It says one renewal for one additional year. I, actually, I should let you read it. Sorry, I'll be quiet.
Yeah, it says the holder of a temporary special use permit shall apply for one renewal for a one-year period by application to the planning board. So I think in the, in the past, there, the only other one that I've ever been here for, they've applied and they've come before the planning board and then received permission to continue.
I'm saying, is it a full-blown application with?
I don't know. I believe it was just a letter at that point, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
That might write about that, Pam.
Unless you need to make changes to the site, obviously, for if something changes about the way you're laying it.
We have to amend the site plan, well, then it's an application.
Right. So, Michelle, was there anything else in that section for the requirement of the permit? Or do we jump to 140 to look at?
No, you jump to 140 and then it becomes very specifically, you know, what you're going to sell, any sort, you know, description of the goods, the services, who owns the, the physical, if it's a structure or a cart or whatever it is, that they're selling out of and, and those types of requirements.
Okay. So.
But food can't be sold out of the truck. Did I catch that?
Yeah, we're not looking to do that.
No, but that's kind of an interesting delineation. I'm not sure where.
No, I think that, as she says, no vehicle or stamp from which goods or, goods or food is sold shall be located so as to impede the free and safe flow of traffic. It has nothing to do with, you can't, it's not that you can't sell. Let's just say you can't sell it something.
You can't stop in the middle of the road and sell some ice cream. You got to pull off.
I missed the, the bridge to the second part.
Yeah, we'll park the truck on that bridge over to the county.
That'd be lovely. Could you do that every day right around at like 4:30, 5 o'clock?
Just on the holidays.
Okay. All right. So, Michelle, this says that this special permit has to comply with Section 140.
Right.
I don't know how we comply with Section 140 if we don't know who the vendors are yet or what they're going to be selling.
Well, it basically says that anybody that's becomes a vendor has to get a, a specific license to be, to vend on that particular property.
I would presume that in this case, the applicant would apply for the vendor's license or the peddler's permit vendor's license for the whole site. And on that description of the, what's to be sold, it's just general household goods and antiques, I would think. Something, you know, clothing, household goods, antiques, whatever you see at the Stormville Flea Market, I would imagine. I don't know how to describe that in.
Does, does, I guess my question is, I don't know how the Stormville Flea Market operates currently. I don't know if there's even anything there because it's a pre-existing, non-conforming.
Right. Kate, you set us up.
Yeah. So I don't know how, I mean, I think this is sort of a unique situation. We don't know that we've come across this particular type of, you Pam, you're, I don't know if we have?
Do we have section, do you have Section 140 right there?
I don't have it in front of me, but I can.
The, the household links to our personal.
Right.
He comes in every year and he gets his permit renewed.
Right.
But he's specific that they sell them very private.
Right. Well, those are the, there's, there's specific requirements in that 140 about what they, what they, what a vendor has to, has to provide. But the question here is whether or not we have to have each individual vendor apply for that permit or if we can allow the.
Well, I, I would have thought that the, the property owner is applying for the special permit to, and to permit, to have these vendors in a group on site. But I would, I guess my, my thought would be that if the vendor is going to come, that they would have to come to town hall and just get their individual permit. It's, I, I believe that's something you can just get from.
The town clerk.
The town clerk. I don't think it's something that is a.
It's a license, basically, really.
Right. It's like, I don't want to say it's like a fishing license because that's not right. But it's, it's not, it's not a matter of needing to have each vendor come before a planning board or town board or something like that.
Well, if it's as simple as filling out a form and paying five bucks or whatever, then I mean, I had the.
So what, the vendor would have to come scheduling, schedule.
If a vendor was going to go to this site, they have to fill out a form and give it to the town clerk. And then they're authorized to then.
I mean, the property owner could coordinate that, get all the different applications and submit them.
Does he already make one business thing?
Um, I, I don't know, actually. Pam might be able to tell us that.
See, I thought you were talking about rotating person. You know, people would come in, they disappear, you know, the, the vendors would be constantly changing.
We're not sure.
I know you're not. That's what I've said. You're not.
We're not sure, you know.
Which means that somebody would have to come in to be there one time and get a permit. And they'd say, you know, I ain't going to.
I'm sure it'd be scheduled event so that we know that next week or two weeks out, we have such, such a person being there. So I'm sure it'd be, people come to town hall and we can fill it out.
But what happens when you have a blank space and somebody comes in at the last minute? They're not going to have time to go through the paperwork. I'm just saying, it really restricts something that doesn't really need restriction, doesn't it?
Well, wait a minute. I, I'm sorry. I don't want to, there's a reason, the town has a requirement that vendors get a permit. It's so that we understand what's being sold in the town and that there aren't, you know.
I believe the law is aimed at permanent vendors like.
No, it's, it's not. It's actually specifically the, Section 140, where, Michelle, go.
Where'd they go, between 140 and 150?
Now they're both gone. Section 140 is, is for temporary, temporary peddlers. So it's a matter of, are you, you know, are you here with goods that are obtained from a legitimate source? Do we understand what they are? Do we know who you are in the town doing business in the town? That sort of thing.
Well, is that license good for the year or for a one-time event?
It's good for a year, I believe. Not a one-time event.
It just says that it should show the length of time that during which it is proposed that the business shall be conducted.
So my assumption would have a vendor saying, well, I'm going to be here every weekend. They would be able to get up to the length of time that this, that the special permit for the property is available. The individual vendor could say, I'm going to be there for that scene.
So they may not make it every week, but they're good for the season?
I would, I would interpret it that way. I think, Michelle, if we need to, we can clarify that with the, certainly with the town clerk and make sure that they.
All right. I missed the beginning of that conversation. But they have to go to the town clerk. The clerk has to actually refer it to the chief of police. And then the chief of police has to review and investigate the application and make a determination within 30 days of their receipt. So it's not a one-day thing.
Okay. But it would be a matter of if we're, if it's a vendor that's going to be here for a length of time, that as long as that's in, they can request the period of time that they want to be vending on the site.
Yeah, I don't see, and I'm looking right now. I don't see any restrictions. Right now, it just says a description of the proposed location of any business and the length of time during which it is proposed that the business shall be conducted. And I don't believe that there's any, the denial of license is subject to re-inview. I don't believe there's anything.
Why would this be different from a craft fair?
I didn't hear that.
Why would this be different than a craft fair? We have craft fairs in Stormville and the vendors just sign up for the slots and they move in, they sell their stuff and they leave.
I'm not.
They don't get licenses or permits.
I don't know what's happening over there in Stormville.
Look, I'm just, I know they happen in all the towns around here, craft fairs.
It seems a little much that, you know, each vendor has to get a license.
The license is good for one year from the date of issuance.
Okay. All right. So, I mean, if they get, have to get a license before the season starts, if she knows, if the applicant knows who the, who the people may be, they'll have to go through the process. It may, I don't think it'll, each one will take 30 days, but, you know, the chief of police has got to sign off on it. But it doesn't have to come before the board. It's, so it's done administrative.
Correct, correct. But I, but I do think that, you know, certainly any, any way that you could do it to expedite it, it would probably make a lot of sense for it to be a very organized process. As many people as you have, do them all at once.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yep. Makes sense.
And there's different requirements for different types of goods. So it's such, it's, it's not in the zoning code. This is in the town code. It's, it's Chapter 140.
Yep. I got it, yeah. So as far as the special permit goes, I think we comply with the standards of that special permit.
And our requirement would just be that the vendors on site comply with Section 140 of the town code.
Right.
So that'll be a, a condition of the special permit for the site.
Exactly.
Right. Okay. Michelle, is there anything else from the special permit that we need to talk about? I know you've tweaked the parking layout like we talked about last time.
No, I think we covered all that. I mean, the, I mean, the one, the one question I have, and, and this is probably a, a problem that everyone would hope for to some extent, I mean, without the issue here.
Too many people, not enough parking.
That we would have so many people that then you have what you sometimes see at a tag sale where you have people blocking the road and that kind of issue. So I think, I mean, ultimately, you know, I think certainly if that happens, the planning board would then they're purviewed to call back the applicant and have a discussion with them because that would be in violation of the special permit.
We would agree to that.
Okay. Okay. Michelle, for the special permit, does it require a public hearing? Because the changes to the site plan itself are temporary. They're not actual permanent changes, right? I don't think you made anything.
Well, there's really no changes. This is temporary.
Actually, we could put this under minor.
So the site plan changes, yeah. But that would, that's temporary. I mean, that's not, let me just see. Hope that's temporary.
Now, for tag sales in the town, they don't need permits. To me, this is like kind of a rotating tag sale on a site.
Oh, I have to read 140 then.
I'm just.
I'm not, I, I would assume that the town is doing the right thing in any place where it's allowing vendors on site via the town code.
I don't know about here for tag sales, but I know in, in the town that I live in, you do have to get, you have to pay a fee and, and get some sort of permission.
Although, for the record, Keith, the board does enjoy tormenting you.
Laurie, I had one comment with regards to the site plan.
Sure. Thank you.
The, the access drive to the rear parking, or to the parking in the yard, it's, the width is depicted as 20 feet on the plan, I believe.
Well, we showed a 20-foot lane just for visual purposes.
And a portion of it is, a portion of it is gravel.
Right.
And my comment was, you know, would there be, maybe there should be some thought given to making that gravel 20 feet wide such that cars could, you know, pass each other there? Because people are going to take the driveway because it's gravel. So they're going to travel down the driveway, which is only wide enough for one car. So that, you know, really the 25 feet that's depicted on the plan doesn't mean much.
That's for the, that's for the public access, not the vendor access, along the bottom of the property? Bottom of the map, I mean? And how wide is it right now? I mean, is that a significant change?
It's about 10, 12, I guess.
So it's only a single travel lane?
So if someone's coming out and someone's coming in, someone has to stop and go around each other or, you know, and that's going to see the most wear and tear for cars coming in and out. You know, that's.
I mean, since this is low volume, we would anticipate, you know, we could widen into 16 or 18 and get two cars by each other. I mean, I don't know if 20 is necessary.
I guess I would, I would like to see what the traffic actually is at the site before you go bringing in and building a road on it.
We could review, we could revisit that at the first renewal to see how things are operating out there. And then if we feel that it's.
I mean, how.
I guess my concern is that, you know, that's the access to where people are going to park. If two cars, you know, I mean, basically, it's going to look like they can't pass each other because they're going to take the gravel driveway. So, you know, someone's going to either have to pull that onto the grass or someone's going to want to back up, right?
So Keith, are you, can you stake it or something to be, make a clear ingress and a clear egress? One on the grass, one on the gravel?
We could do that, absolutely.
And then if it's, if next year it needs, that you want both of them to be gravel based?
Sure.
I mean, frankly, even halfway through.
That's actually a good idea for now.
Maybe you could do it with small traffic cars, you know.
Yeah, just something that shows that there's two lanes and I just hesitate to have you bring them, you know, and widen that when, if it works without it, it's.
That makes sense.
Okay. And Michelle, I know.
A public hearing is required for this.
I didn't hear you.
A public hearing is required.
For the special permit, okay. All right. Is there anything else we need to be able to schedule this for a public hearing? Is there anything?
Okay.
I think we would just have you update. There's, you have a couple notes on the plan. We just want to make sure it's clear that each vendor would need to follow Section 140. Whether you, whether the applicant or the shop owner is coordinating that or not, every, each vendor would need to follow Section 140 of the town code. And that we would, we would need to have some sort of assurance that parking doesn't get out of control here.
Yeah.
I know that's the problem you want to have, but if you have that problem.
Not necessarily.
Issue. So, you know, you have to come back and revisit it if it is.
I don't know if there's even like a, you know, something that relates to the organization of the site because you are just parking up grass.
Right.
One sort of recommendation I made in my mind was maybe the potential that there's, you know, some type of onsite monitoring by the, by the owner or the, you know, the person that's putting on.
We could, we could cove the whole site up and just.
I mean, just so that, because it's, I mean, parking, if parking falls offsite, that's one thing. And parking might fall offsite because people didn't park them. You know, that's kind of the thing.
Yeah, exactly right. I don't know if that needed to rise to the level of being, you know, a note on the plan or whether we're just going to assume that that's going to occur.
Okay. You have a couple of days that you'd have to get your circulation out if you're going to make. make July 15th, or there is an August 5th meeting? You have to put a sign up on the property, you gotta do your advertising, notify the neighboring site owners.
Should I, I just gotta, I got my kid going to Washington, I just... Uh, yes, July 15th. I'll get the sign tomorrow.
Okay.
And when do the plans have to be back here?
Plans have to be in by June 30th? That's a Monday, right? That's, that's, yeah, by June 30th, or July 15th, and you have to have your advertising out, or your notifications out 25 days prior.
That's in a couple of days, right? Okay. You're doing some mailing.
500 feet.
500 feet? Very good. July 15th?
Okay, do I have a motion to schedule MAM Realty amended site plan and special permit for July 15th?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you, Keith. Hey, the next time, excuse me, the next item on our agenda is Stuart Scott, six lots on Berg's path. Sorry for my voice and the coughing, guys, I apologize.
So you're gonna lose it soon, or?
Hopefully not. It's just allergies, the, the season has been pleasant. Well, I'm happy it's finally warm.
Good evening.
Hot air.
Yeah, Ernie Martin, KC Engineering, regarding the Stuart Scott subdivision. I know, I think this was our second submittal, you know, we advanced the plan to the point that, you know, not only do we show the proposed lots, but we show the houses and the septic systems, the proposed wells, and probably on a, on a more detailed scale, the issues regarding the wetlands. As you probably know or remember, there are four wetlands located on the property, these are Army Corps regulated. We are proposing to... We're proposing to keep this wetland intact, however, this one we're looking to remove, but we're going to expand the wetland down in this area, and this wetland here would remain intact. We've had numerous communications between our wetland biologist and the Corps. The plan is moving ahead, we anticipate a permit probably in the 30 to 45-day range.
I know there's been a lot of fill on the site, I know some of the fill pads are for the septic, which would be permissible by code as long as it's not filling in wetlands in terms of the per-lot limitation of fill being brought in, but I think there's also a lot of other locations on the site that have some significant fill areas, there's just kind of an odd, odd topography to the site right now. I have a couple of questions about the way you're proposing to change the wetland area, and I, I understand you're speaking with Army Corps, but it just seems to me like there's, there's probably been significantly more wetlands on this site at some point than there is right now. So I understand that you're trying to preserve what's there, but I think that there's probably, there probably was a lot more in the past. So there's a couple of things with regard to, you know, disrupting one wetland, I'm, I'm not sure whether that's actually needed, if you have, you know, if there was a different lot layout that didn't require that, if a fewer, if one less lot would not require that, and we could stay out of all wetland areas, I think that would be really appropriate. In terms of the little wetlands, and I'm sorry, I'm not seeing the lot numbers, and I can't remember the, where you're, you're proposing the expansion, I can't remember the lot number, but you said there's kind of two, a smaller wetland above it, and then the larger wetland that you're proposing the expansion of, why wouldn't those be connected? Why, why wouldn't you just increase the expansion to connect those and have a more cohesive?
You mean in this area?
Yeah.
Well, because there's a town easement that runs through that property.
Okay.
So if the town had to maintain that storm sewer line, it would be within a wetland. I mean, we could, and matter of fact, and I can get into that a little later, I, later I had some other thoughts or ideas regarding that. But that was the reason why we, we ended it at the property line. But just, if I could just speak for a moment on the wetlands, and this is based on my discussions with our wetland biologist, these are not what you call high-quality wetlands. First of all...
Today.
Pardon me?
Today.
Well, even back in the day, you know, back in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, this was an orchard. So it wasn't always like the Great Swamp or some of the other known wetlands that we have in the area. These wetlands right now are, they're not connective, whether that was man-made or otherwise. They also had invasive species that are, that are, are into these wetlands, so...
I'm sorry, they have what in the wetlands?
Invasive species.
Invasives.
Invasive.
Which would be what, as an example?
Fragmites, which is the tall, most of the time when you pass a wetland now, you see these tall grasses that almost look like cornstalks, those are invasive, it's an invasive wetland species, because typically in this area, you have hattails.
Okay.
And they took over and they drowned out, and they're usually when they require some sort of wetland mitigation, they require that you pull out fragmites.
Okay. Is it, is it strictly flora?
Um, no, and it's also purple, one of the other major invasives here is purple lostrife, which they're very beautiful, purple tipped flowers that you'll often see in wetlands, that's also an invasive. There's other invasive plants, but fragmites is the one that has created the largest problem for this area and this region. In fact, if you go out to Newark, that's all you see for miles and miles and miles if you drive near the Newark Airport, and it's all, it, it destroys any native vegetation, basically, it just takes over.
Okay. So the, the smaller wetland that's being proposed for disturbance, Michelle, has its...
I, I, actually, I think I gave, I might have another copy of it, but I gave, wait, I think I did have another copy of it, I have a list of the species that are in there from where, from my wetland guy was out there. Yeah, I did have.
But it, I mean, do you agree that it's a low-quality wetland? Are all the wetlands here low-quality, is that a...
I mean, I think they're not functioning the way they were intended to function initially. What happened here was, I think this was always, originally was wetland, and over time has been heavily disturbed, and some of the wetland, because of, because either because of the hydrology of the area or the soil type and the vegetation, has come back. And so if you were to leave this the way it is now, you probably ultimately would, the wetland would continue to grow ultimately, depending on how the drainage occurred on the site, but clearly it's, it's re-establishing itself as wetland, even with all of the disturbance that happened. But, you know, there, I'm looking at the, the list of species right now, Japanese stillgrass, multiflora rose, these are all difficult invasive species, some of you might know the Japanese stillgrass from your own garden, it's that really small, thin grass that comes up. But there are also some native plants as well, and, I mean, it's not, hydroxic soils were found throughout the area. We, the, the argument that we made was that the wetlands were connected, which is why the Army Corps, we had the Army Corps go out there, because we believed that they were connected. And the Army Corps then did agree with our assessment that they were connected wetlands, which is why they took jurisdiction of them, because if they had, if they had considered them isolated wetlands, then they would not have been waters of the US, and they would not have taken jurisdiction of them. But they agreed with our ultimate assessment that they were connected, which is why they ended up in this process with the, the Army Corps getting the permit. You know, they're not, you're not seeing probably bog turtle or landing turtle in the wetlands, because it's been such a disturbed area, so it's not a native, you know, it's, it's not like an old growth forest where you haven't had any disturbance, it's clearly been disturbed, there's clearly issues there. I don't know what kind of hydraulic function it has for the area, I'm sure that it's accepting a lot of drainage from the, the existing subdivision, but, you know, and obviously when you muck around and you start, you know, creating additional impervious surfaces and stuff, that changes drainage on the site. And so I don't know what, what the, you know, ultimately what the, the construction of these lots and the more impervious surface is ultimately gonna do to the drainage pattern and the other wetlands that are on the site.
Okay. Yeah, Scott, as far as the, the drainage pipe with the easement for the town, is that something where, I mean, I think if this wetland is expanded, there's gonna be a significant chance that it's gonna continue to expand and still connect to the small one, even if the applicant doesn't do that. Is there issues for the town in having that happen? Is it, do we need to find a different place to do this? What, what's the...
To be honest, I haven't seen it.
Okay.
So, let me take a look at that.
Okay.
Can we go back to, how did all this fill get there? I mean, it's, it's great that we're looking at it going forward, but I'd like to understand how all this fill got there.
You're speaking of the miscellaneous piles that are there?
Yeah.
Okay. The, the owner and the applicant of this property, I mean, he purchased this property probably in the early 80s, and sometime in the mid to late 80s went through and did a subdivision. And these, and this, and if you go back through the, the original environmental impact statement, this, this was like the second phase of the subdivision, and I think that's been well documented. And I think what has happened over the years, a couple of things. Firstly, through some poor advice by someone, and I can't say, I don't, I don't know, and I can't say, he went back through, I think, to his original plan, because he was having difficulty getting septic approvals, and he started bringing, he brought fill in with the idea that he would let it sit for two years, then come back and test it, and then go through this process we're going through right now. That's about as much as I know about that. So those six or seven piles that are noted on the map are areas where he brought in run-of-bank gravel fill. The other thing is, I think, over the years, and I was down there on one occasion, I think people have gone to that area, and I think they've dumped stuff, you know, organic stuff, lea, leaves, branches, maybe they're doing trimming around their house, things of that nature. To my knowledge, that's probably the extent of, of this filling. One is just, like I said, yard clippings, et cetera, the other is the actual fill with, which the owner has brought in.
Only at one time, or over the years?
Pardon me?
Only at one time, or over the years?
I, I think the fill was done, the best as I can tell, I think it was done probably over a, I'm gonna say a six-month, maybe a year basis, and that probably goes back six, seven, eight years ago.
Are the orange the home, home sites?
The orange depicts the house site, yes.
So, I'm focusing again on the one where you're going to fill in, proposing to fill in a wetland, are you filling in that entire wetland?
Speaking of the...
And I'm sorry, I just, I can't see the lot numbers.
Speaking of this one?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. You know, anything that would be organic there would be removed, and that area would be filled.
The entire wetland?
In, in this case, yes. We would keep this one intact, we would keep this one, obviously whatever is here, we would keep this one, but then we would add on, because whatever we're removing here, we're, we're bringing it over here. And, and I think my, my point, speaking with the wetland biologist, and, and Michelle and I spoke on this also, this is the lowest part of the site. This is the logical place for this wetland to be, and whether it's exactly the shape or if on its own, or even we think about, maybe that's another discussion, whether we extend that, connect that over here, I mean, I'm not opposed to that, if the town's fine with that, but this is the logical place for the wetland to be.
Even surrounded by road on all three sides?
Pardon me?
Even surrounded by road on three sides?
Yes.
I'm just looking at the picture, and I could see where the natural wetlands would have extended much further. It has clearly been filled over the years, I don't know if let's go back to the 2000s, but the 70s, 80s, it's like there was tremendous amount of fill.
Tremendous amount of filling?
Yes. Just from the way the vegetation looks.
Well, I don't know whether you can look at vegetation and say that it's...
Well, if you look at the house with the swimming pool on the left, and then you look at the vegetation directly to the right, it's different. Someone has done some filling with something there. The vegetation to the left of the house is fairly tall trees, looks like secondary or tertiary growth, whereas the area that's here looks like scrub growth, like somebody filled and took down the trees and piled them there.
Well, alls I can say, you would, I'm not sure what you're referring to, but...
Picture right there. See the house with the swimming pool in the lower left?
Yeah.
The, the fairly good-sized trees to the left of the house, and then you look to the right of the house, clearly disturbance and fill of some sort was done, because that's scrub growth. I don't know when it was done, but it was done, and that was probably originally all wetland.
Well, alls I could say, and maybe, and maybe a recommendation, is the board should go out and walk the site.
Sure.
I mean, I've walked it many times, and there's, obviously, the obvious, fill piles are very obvious, the other areas...
Well, where fill was put 10 or 20 years ago, it's not that obvious, you get leaves and things come down, you get some organic stuff on the surface, you weren't getting scrub brush, where you take a shovel to it, you know immediately if you've had banked gravel instead of blow.
I mean, I think one of the reasons why my, our wetland guy was concerned about it, and why they wanted Army Corps out there, was when they did, he did go down with an auger, he did reach hydro, what you would call hydroxic soils.
Right.
And, and that is one of three indicators that are necessary in order to consider something a wetland. You have to have hydrology, you have to have hydroxic soils, and you have to have hydrophytic vegetation, and all three of the indicators were present in the areas on, on the map. And, and he believed very strongly that they were present because they were connected at, at one point, and, and, and the Army Corps did agree with that assessment, and we did, when we were out there, this is back now, I think in 2012, we did agree that whatever line the Army Corps took is their line, the town would also agree to. So we all were out there, we all agreed to one wetland line, so the wetlands that are delineated were what were agreed to out in the field as, as being...
As the current wetlands.
As the current wetlands.
Okay.
But because they were connected, we didn't consider them individual wetlands, so when looking at the town code, we added up all of the individual wetlands to come up with one wetland size, and that's how it was regulated, because, because our code currently only regulates wetlands of certain size.
Okay.
Did you perchance...
And so did it hit our code level?
Yes, when you add them all together, yes.
Okay.
Did you perchance go in the area where it quote doesn't look like wetland, that looked like scrub, and go down and see how many, how long it took?
He went, he just walked around the entire site and did auger testing.
Okay, I'm just curious how long he had, how deep he had to go before he hit the same?
Well, in some of the areas, there's been fill, so you can't, you can't even get to the hydroxic soils unless you had some sort of machinery.
Oh, I...
But in the areas where there wasn't fill, he was getting to hydro soil.
Okay.
In all the areas where, where they've stated that they're wetlands, there was clearly hydroxic soils there.
Okay, so he'd need a hydraulic digger, Howard?
You would need to dig a lot deeper to get, because there's been a lot of disturbance and fill out there. And some of it was, you know, I mean, there's also piles of, and I don't think, you know, I think there's the fill pads that you can see on the aerial, and then there's some kind of moonscaping piles that were probably, maybe they were debris or mulching at some point, who knows, but at this point, they, you know, they're mounds, that have vegetation on them.
What's the likelihood that they're mulch?
I don't know. I don't know, I don't know what they were at, at one point. I mean, we went back and looked at historic aerials.
Okay.
We were able, we were able to find out that it was certainly an orchard at one point, so there, and there, and there was likely, because it was an orchard, there was likely drainage cut through the orchard to irrigate at some point, which is also probably, you know, maybe why you get some of the wetland here, but there's also a gigantic New York State DPC wetland right across from East Hook Road, which I'm sure extended onto the property at some point in, in history as well. This is still, this entire area is still within a DPC check zone, and depending on And, um, depending on where you take the line across the road, there could even be some adjacent area on the, on the existing project side.
So, Michelle, what, the applicant is proposing filling in a wetland and expanding one of the other wetlands. What is, what is the best thing at this point for the wetlands? Is that the right action to take and be able to put another house here? Or do you leave each of the wetlands alone and say, no house there?
I mean, it's, I think you could argue the point the other way. I think, um, I think there's some validity to the argument the applicant is making that, that sometimes, you know, creating one central wetland and focusing, you know, the, trying to create a better location and, and keep development and, um, things out of a particular area to try to create a higher quality wetland in one spot may be better than creating tiny little patches of, of high-quality wetland all over the place, because ultimately what you're trying to do is provide habitat and, and, um, storage for water, essentially. And these smaller wetlands are going to be less attractive, especially with other homes around and driveways and impervious surface to habitat. So if you're going to allow some of these lots to occur on the site, you may be better off having a wetland in one area where the animals can go.
So the applicant is stating that where it's currently positioned is the lowest point in the land and it's the best place for it to be. I'm seeing another very small wetland very close to it. I get that there's some sort of easement for the town there, but I mean-
It's a, as far as my understanding, it's a drainage easement and a storm sewer there. Am I right about that, I think? And that's actually showing, I don't know, let me show you this map.
The other thing I would like, I could add on this too, going along with what has just been discussed, I think it was asked for, and we're proposing that there be a restrictive covenant or an easement in this area. So similar to other projects, I'm sure that, that you have-
That'll hap, that'll happen anyway, because you're going to have to, you're going to have to-
Well, the good thing about that, I think, is that the fact that it's restrictive, the person that comes in here just can't go in there and start doing something because it's restrictive. Whereas if you didn't have something like that, it, I think the town has control.
So with the, with the other wetland that's staying, I guess on the upside of the property, the higher side of the property, wetland D?
D.
It looks like the house is fairly, is that the septic, what is the, and I'm sorry, I'm just having a hard time seeing the plan.
Okay.
What is the rectangle to the-
This is the well am which we're not touching, okay? Uh, what you're seeing here is the driveway. And the reason the driveway's positioned here, this is the height point in the roads, this is the best site distance.
So the, the gray triangle to the, next to the house, what am I seeing? Is that-
This?
Yeah.
Those are one of those fill piles we were talking about earlier. This is going to be removed. These two here, there's two shaded areas here. There's one, two, three, four, five, six. There's six shaded areas. They're fill piles that ultimately would be-
You can see them very clearly on the aerial. I don't know if you have a copy of that. That's on the reverse side, I'm sure.
Thank you. Do we want to go out and take a look at this before we narrow, zero in on a lot layout?
Actually, just FYI, Craig and I had talked, he had asked me if maybe I would take him out there, so we had planned on going this Friday, but I'm open to changing that if that doesn't work with anyone else's schedule, as long as Craig's okay.
Well, I'd like to make sure the applicant has an opportunity to be there with us, so if we're out there, we should all try to be out there at the same time. When were you going to go on Friday?
We were, well, we just talked about it tonight. I was going to check with, oh, with Ernie to make sure it was okay with applicant, so.
Okay. Um, how many board members would like to visit the site and have an opportunity to walk it?
Could I bring a shovel?
What's that?
Can I bring a shovel?
I would prefer us not to be invasive on a site that we're walking. So Craig, you definitely would like to go, John?
I'm working.
No, I know, but we can find a different day and time that works. If I know which board members would like to go.
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. So, I hate to take weekends, but I know the folks working-
I can probably make that work. I just have to, I don't have my calendar, but I can probably, um, early morning, I know would probably, well, actually, not this early morning, because I have a soccer fundraiser that I could do, but, um, but at some point on Saturday or Sunday, I can make myself available, definitely.
Okay. Is there, is there a time that works better for you? And Ernie, would you want to be there, or would the applicant want to be there? I don't want to, I don't want us to be tromping around the site.
No, we'll definitely, either myself and or the well am biologist would be there. And so if you're looking at this Saturday or Friday?
Well, I don't know if it should-
I mean, except to you guys who have a worse schedule, I'll make myself available or have somebody there.
I will not be able to be there this Saturday, but if others are, if that works for others and it works for you guys, I'm, I'm fine with that. I can, I've been out there quite a few times, so. On a Sunday?
Okay.
Don't do that. Can't do that. Okay.
Oh, boy.
Saturday?
I agree, I can't do either.
What about, what about on a weekday evening? It stays light until nine o'clock.
Till nine o'clock, yeah.
Maybe like five-thirty or six o'clock, even six-thirty on a, on a weekday? That would work?
Monday.
Okay. Nine.
We have a limitation on number of members that can be-
Not if we announce it in our public meeting, then everyone can go if they would like to. That's why, that's why if we want to do something like this, we need to announce it. So Michelle, is there a weekday, is there a weekday next week?
Yeah.
I can't tell what-
I think, you're, you're saying I can-
So isn't this a public meeting where we can announce that we're going to have a- Okay. Okay, that's what we're doing, because we'll, we'll decide on a day and time right now and then we'll announce it. Okay. So Michelle, is there a weekday next week or the week after that would work for you in the evening?
Absolutely. I just have to check the calendar, but I'm pretty sure, I, I don't remember having anything in the evenings next week, so I'm pretty sure I'm open most nights, but I can check as soon as I get home tonight and send an email to Pam. But if you want to schedule something-
So then if it's all right, then can we, um, Ernie, I don't know what your timing is on this, but can we schedule a site visit on July 1st so that everybody has their calendars and we can get a date that works for everyone?
Or if you want to try to schedule it, I will, I will do my best to either be there or have somebody from my office there, if I can't be there. And more than likely, I will be able to be there.
Okay. I would like you to be there if you can, because, or somebody from your office to be there, because you have, you, I read through, I honestly, I read through the report and I didn't understand it.
Yeah.
And I couldn't figure out where the conclusion was and the recommendation, which is what I was looking for in the report.
From, from Mike's new wiki's report, you're saying, yeah.
Yeah.
If I may add, Michelle, I would like you to be there because you've been there since we first delineated the wetlands, rather than since someone in there-
I'm pretty sure I'm open next week, it's just that I sometimes have night meetings or schedules that I'm not, I have other towns that I work.
Understood.
We understand.
Understood. Okay. So is there a day next week that works for folks? And again, I, I'm not going to be available, I would be available the following week, but I can't do next week. Any day? Any day that doesn't work?
We'll wait for the next week.
It's all right.
Tuesday's the only day. I have a election.
Okay. We want to do maybe like Monday, the 30th, because I would, I'm available. Is that, Michelle, is that, sounds good to me? Does Monday work for most folks? Monday, the 30th?
Monday, the 30th.
What time did you say? Um, what, what time are folks able to be there? I, I work just down the road, so I would be able to be there anytime after five.
I'm good at any-
Throw out a time, what time?
All day, all day's good.
Monday, the 30th at six, six-thirty?
Six would be fine.
Six, six o'clock? Monday, the 30th at six o'clock?
Okay.
Pam, give a reminder, sorry.
Monday, the 30th?
Monday, the 30th, 6:00 PM, out at the site, and we'll be able to walk it. We'll have, um, Michelle, or Michelle there and Ernie, whoever you want to have there, if you can be there, that would be great. We just would like to kind of get a feel for the site, I think that'll help us.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, that's good. I think that would be very helpful for everyone. Just one final thing.
Sure.
Have you, where do we stand on SEACR here? Have you circulated?
We haven't done any circulation.
I don't believe we've done anything yet.
Because we had determined that SEACR had already been done via the previous review. So we were, we were-
Is it grandfathered from the original?
For, for Tom, we were still, we were under that original findings, because the original findings allowed the subdivision of the two lots.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what we, that was the review we did initially.
Okay. And that's where this lot layout comes from and all of that?
It's from the original SEACR review.
It's still within this board's purview, though, to tweak this layout and make sure there-
Yes, because they're, they were allowed under SEACR to have the, to consider lots, but they still have to, they still have to abide by any new regulations and laws and site plan, I mean, and subdivision review per the new codes.
Okay.
In the original E I S, I believe, in this area, there were seven lots.
Okay.
But, I mean, at that time, we identified state wetlands, but not federal.
Okay.
All right, so Monday, the 30th.
Monday, the 30th. We'll make sure an email goes out to the board members if there, if, if Michelle or Ernie, if you guys have a conflict or something unusual happens, but other than that, Pam will schedule a formal site visit for the planning board on Monday, June 30th at 6:00 PM, out at the site on Burt's Path, Office Talk.
Great.
All right. Thank you. Okay, the last item on our agenda tonight is MEA Studio 54, a proposed change of use. Thank you for waiting through the meeting. I know it was a long one.
It's quite, quite all right. I find it very interesting. My name is Dennis Lovopa, I own the building.
Okay.
And, um, I guess I'm here for a change of use permit. I'm not quite sure, you know.
I'm not sure it's a permit, we just, you're, you're changing the use of a commercial site in town, so we just need to understand the change in use and make sure that it's not going to cause any significant issues with your existing site plan.
Okay. All right, well, um, it's a commercial building, I occupy the first floor, we're like an engineering firm, we test air conditioning systems. And, um, the lower level, I have a section that I'm renting out. I rented it out in the past to a chiropractor-
Okay.
-who was in there for five years.
Okay.
She's moved and now I'm looking to have MEA move in.
Okay.
And she's going to be doing facials and, um-
I think we had a copy of the sign that you wanted to put out that listed a few different things. Pam, I don't know if we have that, do we have the information?
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
My name is Myra Carter-Phillips. I'm a resident and, um, yes, I am in renting the location. It's got a couple of treatment rooms and I'm a practitioner, I've been an electrologist for over 25 years, and I also do permanent makeup, and I have an esthetician and a licensed massage therapist.
Okay. Great. So in terms of the difference between the chiropractor, which I would assume would have been under quasi-medical, I don't mean quasi-medical parking versus, um-
Beauty.
Beauty use-
There's plenty of parking.
You only have two, um, two rooms, so what is the maximum number of employees you would, and, and clients would have?
Everything's by appointment in there. It's all by appointment.
So it's MEA's a practitioner, we have three practitioners, but we only have two treatment rooms.
Okay.
So how it would work is by appointment and practitioners would come as they have a license, so it's the two treatment rooms.
So you have two, at the most, two clients?
Right.
And two practitioners at each time?
Correct.
So four, four and you, so five total cars at any given time could be on there?
Yes.
Five total cars. Okay. And you have parking in the back, right?
Right, there's parking in the back where she parks and we park on the side.